So, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 3 Fairfax Town Council meeting. I'd like to welcome you all. And we will begin this evening with a pledge of allegiance. Okay, and Madam Deputy, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Weinsdorf.
Here.
Councilmember Kohler.
Here.
Vice Mayor Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Lacks.
Here.
Mayor Goddard.
I'm here.
Thank you.
So, we need to approve the agenda. And do we have any changes?
I don't see any. I'll move approval.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion, Weinsdorf, second, Kohler, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, I went ahead and welcomed you, but I have not officially called the meeting to order. So, I've never used this, but it could be fun. So, now the meeting is officially in order. Meeting protocol. I did say the date. So, the meeting protocol, the mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. So, if you would all please turn off or silence your cellphones. We will review the agenda at 10:00 PM and ascertain which items, if any, need to be continued. And anything we don't start by 11:30 will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule. And reporting out on closed session, I have nothing to report. We took no action in closed session. Announcements. So, the Town Center Plan Workshop, the second of the workshops, has been postponed. Anyone listening at home, I repeat, the workshop has been postponed and rescheduled for October 1st from 9:00 to 1:00 PM, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, right here in the Women's Club. Very important information about chipper days. So, chipper days is your opportunity to clear your brush and bring it to specified locations in town where it will be chipped and hauled away. And it's very important that we all do this, make sure that we have the space between our house and our brush and protect as much as possible from fire danger. So, you can bring yard trimmings up to four inches in diameter, and please do not bring grass or rocks or firewood. So, for the scenic neighborhood, this Saturday, August 6, at Alima and Sir Francis Drake, once again, for the scenic neighborhood, this Saturday, Alima and Sir Francis Drake, 9:00 to 3:00. For the Jolly Hill Neighborhood, Saturday, August 13, in the Pavilion Parking Lot, which everyone knows is just underneath the pavilion itself, there's a lot, and you can bring your greens to be chipped to the parking lot from 9:00 to 3:00 on August 13. For the Cascade Neighborhood, Saturday, September 10, at Doc Agar Park, which is the Triangle Park at the base of Cascade Drive, 9:00 to 3:00, once again. For the Deer Park Neighborhood, Saturday, September 24, Deer Park Parking Lot, 9:00 to 3:00. So, this is posted on the website. We have a banner, which is a little hard to read, but please spread the word. It's very important that people know this service is provided. You pay it in your rates for your waste garbage, just garbage rates. Vacancies on boards and commissions. We have one vacancy on the Planning Commission, two on open space, one on the General Plan Implementation Committee, which is GPIC, as you may hear it referred to. We have three openings on the Volunteer Board. It's a great way to start getting involved in the town, and applications are always available at Town Hall or on the Town Website, and you can contact Madam Clerk for information or applications. Streets for People is our wonderful rendition of the Open Streets Movement, where we close Bellinas Road to traffic for one day between 8:30 and 5:00 PM. The event is from 10:00 to 4:00. This is a celebration of our community. It's as grassroots as it gets. It's an opportunity for people to come out and enjoy themselves and be together and play in the street and have a great time. Dance and eat, and it's an everyone, all-inclusive, very wonderful opportunity to celebrate together. I had one other, no, no, Fairfax Food Pantry, as I hope most people know about, is every Saturday morning from 9:00 to 11:00 at the Fairfax Community Church at 2398 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. They always need volunteers. It's always an open, welcoming, inviting place to come if you should need some extra food or if you would like to just make sure that you're taking care of yourself and you're well-fed. One other thing is that the farmer's market, we need a lot of people to go out and support our farmers at the farmer's market. We use it, and we've come to take it for granted that we have this wonderful little space that we all enjoy, and we go and we picnic, but our farmers need our support. In order for that farmer's market to continue to exist, we need to start championing it a little bit more and making sure that we purchase there. Now, I know we have a plethora of wonderful places to buy fresh, organic vegetables, as the Good Earth is here luckily in our backyard, but please do support the farmer's market. Apparently, it is Farmer's Market Week next week, beginning on August 7. So, please go out next Wednesday, or if you're in time, leaving here and support the farmer's market. I know John has an announcement.
Yeah, my announcement is about the Fairbuck, which is Fairfax's local currency, and it's basically kind of winding down at this moment. It's kind of evolving from, you know, people have been using it less and less, and the Good Earth has stopped accepting the tokens for payment for food and stuff. At any rate, it's still a souvenir. It's for sale at the Bike Museum as a souvenir. You can get mint-conditioned tokens there. But I wanted to announce to the community that it is winding down, and I have established a email address called FairfaxFairbuck@gmail.com, in case anybody has issues or, you know, wants to contact me. I will answer those emails. And the board has been meeting a few times. They're basically, we're, you know, doing redemptions to businesses that still hold them and deciding, basically, the Fairbuck also supports community projects. A number of businesses have said, "Well, you know, I've got 100 tokens, but I'm going to hang on to them because I know that the money backing it is going to community projects," and so that's kind of their donation to the community, which I should name that particular one, which is Fairfax Lumber, who did that with 100 tokens. Because basically, that's a lot of what Fairbuck is, and Streets for People is one of the events that builds community that the Fairbuck supports. There's many other ones, and there'll be an article coming out in newspaper and stuff. But I wanted to let, make that announcement publicly here and let people know that if they want to contact the Fairbuck Board about it, that's FairfaxFairbuck@gmail.com. So, that's my announcement.
Barbara.
Yeah, I just want to mention something, John. The chamber sent out a notice that they would no longer be accepted after August 7, so that may be an error. So, maybe you might want to check in with that.
Yeah, originally, they'd said the 31st, but maybe they moved that back.
Well, I think mine's working.
Okay, now, no, I got the one that isn't working. I guess I'm holding it. Yeah, they may well have moved that back on the announcement because we had a discussion that this council meeting would be after that sunset date.
Great.
So, I'm glad to hear that their announcement said the 7th because I was arguing for that.
Okay, great. Well, I want to just announce something. Some of you are familiar with the Marin Clean Energy Deep Green Incentive Program. We got a grant from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, launched an incentive February 26 for 100 new deep green customers. You get a $5 credit each month for one year. So, it pays for kind of the difference between light green and deep green. So, if you're not a Marin Clean Energy customer, you can sign up for deep green, or if you're currently light green, you can switch. So, you get $5 a month for one year as an incentive. As of the 1st of August, we had 52 people who are signed up for deep green using the incentive. Now, this is for new customers, and so we have 48 more places. So, I encourage people who are interested, this is a good time to sign up. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, we are now at the point, we're moving on to open time for public expression, public comment, and if you would wish, if you wish to address the council, please approach the podium, push the button, state your name and address if you feel comfortable doing so. Individuals have three minutes. I would really respectfully request that you keep to those three minutes. If you're representing a group, feel free to take five. And, yeah, thank you.
Mark Hammerman, 12 Shadow Creek Court, Fairfax. Zone 9 Flood Board Meeting, June 21, 2016, San Anselmo City Hall. "It's possible that there will be a Save Sunnyside movement," I said to the board, "and if there is, you're going to have to deal with it." I started to leave the podium, but before I could, one of the board members spoke up. "Mr. David Weinsdorf, a good man, someone who wants to do the right thing and is passionate about it. My comment had been about Sunnyside, however, earlier I had spoken about Lefty." "I want you to take this back to your friends or whomever you're talking to," David advised. "If Lefty Gomez comes off, okay. I just dread the day because Fairfax will flood, San Anselmo will flood, no, 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 Ross will flood. It's not that we think it's terrific to create a detention basin at Lefty Gomez. We don't have a choice. It's not going to go away. If the people don't want it, it will go away," I said. "And you will flood," was David's pronouncement. My response was that I didn't believe him, and at that point, it seemed like everybody on the board started talking to me at once, so I snuck away. Now, I've heard David speak about the only tool in the box twice. It's only fair that I put him through my second doctor's story. An 18-year-old male, we'll call him Pete, was hospitalized because of bleeding due to his ulcerative colitis. Pete's gastroenterologist consulted a surgeon who recommended total colectomy. Pete asked to see me. "I don't want to have my colon removed," he said. "I'll be starting college. I'll be having relationships with girls. I want a normal life. What do you think, doc?" "Surgery is the definitive therapy for colitis," I began. "Every physician knows, no colon, no colitis, no risk of colonic cancer later in life. If that's what you want, it's the only tool in the box." No, I didn't say that. "Your surgeon, a good doc, he wants to do the right thing. He's passionate about it. However, every surgical procedure carries risks, both long and short term. Your disease can be treated medically. The medicine has side effects. Some are dangerous. Medicine could stop working. On the other hand, if your disease becomes inactive, you won't need it anymore. The cancer risk won't go away. However, in the future, there may or may not be better medicines and better ways of preventing cancer. It's your body. It's your call." What I did not tell Pete, sorry, David, is, "If you want to take, I want you to take this back to your friends or whomever you're talking to. If that colon stays in, I just dread the day because you will either bleed out or develop cancer. It's not that I think it's a terrific, take out your colon. We don't have a choice. Your disease is not going to go away." Pete went with the meds. 12 years later, he's doing well, living with his girlfriend in New York. Cancer risk is still there, not insignificant. Pete is willing to live with it if the alternative is colonic surgery. His body, his call. I've heard folks say that San Anselmo voted to shift the burden of flood mitigation upstream to Fairfax. I read the decision a different way. The flood risk is still there. It's not insignificant. San Anselmo is willing to live with it if the alternative is a flood detention basin at Memorial Park.
Excuse me, sir. Are you speaking for a group or are you speaking just on your own?
Just me.
Because you've reached the three minutes.
Oh, okay.
Could you finish up, please?
Yeah, their city, their call. So, anyway, I took it back to my Shadow Creek friends, who are the people I was talking to. They're here tonight. If Lefty goes away, we won't flood. We're upstream. Look at a map. Problems that many of us have with the folks behind the flood basins is lack of attention to detail. Anesthetic, incision approach, antibiotics, post-op steroids, I wouldn't let a surgeon who asked me to help plan those details touch me. Size, shape, costs, operation insurance. Now, let's all help the experts plan the details. I wouldn't let those experts put a shovel in the ground.
Excuse me, sir. We need to honor the three minutes. Thank you. Other public comment, please.
My name's Stephen Franks, 19 Willow Avenue, and I would like to bring the council up to date on the progress made pertaining to Good Earth and the noise level in the early morning hours. Over the last four years, I have spent hours and hours bringing forth 100% accurate accounts of delivery violations and noise violations, as you all know. After sitting through more council meetings than I'd like to remember, the town finally passed me off to the mediator because you, the council, were not willing or wanting to make the owners of Good Earth follow the rules the town had given them. Mediation was just what I expected it to be. I gave two professionals the same information I had brought to all of you over the last four years. The only difference was that they were not, that they were neutral. They do not shop there or receive tax money from that store. What came out of that meeting was that there will be a receiving person to help unload the trucks and can keep control of the noise. Al's word or promise, you tell me. I have been down there at least eight times in the last four months and have not seen one receiving person helping with the deliveries being made. Three weeks ago, I walked into the store at 5:00 AM and asked to see, after being woken up by the backup beepers, and asked to see a receiving clerk. There was nobody to be found. Yes, things are better for the most part, but I am 100% certain things will not last. There is no longer any reason to put this on the agenda because the town's agenda is tax money and enjoying lunch at Good Earth. While I have great respect for the job that is done here, this has been an absolute joke. I am left with Al in control of how he wants to run his business. Thank you.
Wait, just want to quickly ask you. So, you said it's better?
Absolutely.
So, what's not good?
Backup beepers are still coming on in the morning. Al's word has not been followed through again.
Hold it. Garrett, you'll take care of this?
You know, David, thank you very much. It's just been such a waste of time for me. After four years, it's a joke. I mean, take care of what? Take care of what?
We'll contact the store.
Thanks, David. That's a joke. The store's been contacted so many times, it's ridiculous. What's left? What are you, there's no, there's no rules, there's no regulations, there's nobody following through with it. There's nothing.
So, Mr. Franks, you came to speak with us?
Yep.
And listened?
I am.
Can?
Yes, I'm listening.
Right, I can be compassionate about it, but we are going to ask staff to just put it out there one more time, and I hope that we can get some results. It sounds like it was better for a while, so maybe a reminder? Give us a chance.
Love to, love to. It's been four years, over four years.
No, I know.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Good evening. My name is Dana Rosé. I live in San Francisco. The Bay Area had one of the highest rates of breast cancer in the world. Marin County had what was thought to be the highest rates of breast cancer in the world. These extraordinarily high rates turned out to be strongly related to the high usage of hormone replacement therapy, HRT. Leading scientists and cancer researchers had warned the drug companies that the-
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, Renee.
But if you pull your face back a little bit away from the mic, otherwise it distorts it.
Okay.
That's better, perfect.
Better, good. It strongly promoted cancer birth defects in blood clots, leading to heart attacks and strokes, and lab animals probably do the same in people. Drug companies chose to ignore the warnings. They refused to test it for 60 years. At one point, 30 to 50% of American women over 50 were taking it. It was the most profitable drug in history up to that point. Here is some of the research. Editorial, one year after it was synthesized in 1939 in JAMA, says the possibility of carcinoma induced by estrogens cannot be ignored. These are strong proliferating agents. One year later, George Paponekula, the doctor who invented the pap smear, said, "A consideration of this evidence by this study as well as others forces us to the inclusion that Stilbestrol is not suitable for use in human beings." One year later, 1940, Journal of National Cancer Institute, Michael Shimkin, founder of National Cancer Institute, carcinogenicity of synthetic estrogen laboratory animals that have similar patterns to humans. It produced breast cancer not only in female mice, which were bred with a susceptibility to developing breast cancer, it also produced breast cancer in unaltered male mice. 1977, Sol Gussberg, a doctor, well-known researcher, said, "Supportive data for the estrogen cancer hypothesis is substantial. Estrogen is a powerful growth-stimulating agent." This dates back to the 1920s. The suspicion was further enhanced in the next 20 to 50 years by numerous accounts of intermetal cancer and breast cancer in women who were exposed to estrogen. Finally, at the insistence of the Women's Health Movement, it was tested. Congress gave $10 or $20 million. They found it increased breast cancer 25% greater incidence. A larger study in England, the Million Women Study, found 100% greater chance of developing breast cancer. We were told it's horrible, people are getting more cancer.
Excuse me, I hate to interrupt, but-
Just one more thing, one more minute.
Less than a minute.
Okay, less.
Can you finish up?
So, anyway, the cancer it caused was incredibly aggressive. 96% greater likelihood of dying from it. Why? Because it promotes cell growth, which was known all the way from the 1920s.
I'm so sorry, but I do need to cut you off. I want to thank you for your commitment and your compassion because I know you're down there at the Good Earth, and you talk to people because you care.
Yep, yep.
But I do need to limit you to the three minutes, to be fair.
Three minutes is good.
So, thank you so much.
I'll be back next time with three more minutes.
Three minutes is good. Thank you.
I'll try to be brief. Mic meter 28, Shadow Creek Court, next to Sunnyside and next to Lefty Gomez Field, right in the middle of it, and right behind Loma Alta. We're just here as concerned citizens to speak out about detention basins and how we really feel they don't belong in all of Ross Valley and particularly in Fairfax. Sorry? A little louder. Okay. We don't think they belong in neighborhoods. We don't think they belong next to or near schools. We're a small, narrow valley. We're spaces at a premium, and basins are not a good solution. There are environmental concerns. There can be toxic deposits that form in the basin from stormwater runoff. There can be toxic contamination, particularly with Sunnyside. I know Sunnyside is in county land, but it pertains to, you know, our town. Toxic contamination during excavation of the nursery site due to pesticides, destruction of the habitat of the repairing corridor, and destruction of residents' property installing concrete walls through backyards along the creek bed. Our safety concerns are many. There could be potential failure of the basin and/or the system leading to flooding of the adjoining neighborhoods, and we are not in a flood area where we're at. A body of water is an attractive nuisance. It can lead to death or injury, and property damage during construction with earth settling and different situations like that. Finally, the financial concerns are great. We really don't feel there's enough budget to fulfill the plan right now. They're looking at, you know, I know Lefty's over $17 million, Sunnyside's over $17 million, and with the way projects go, that could escalate to $20 million, $25 million easily for one basin. The plan calls for four or five basins, and the potential of one basin really making a huge difference is very questionable. We think that funds can be spent, a lot of practical measures. We were walking the other day along Fairfax Creek. It's just, I know that's going to happen at some point, but it's been many years. The creek's still loaded full of debris, and no cleanup has taken place. And finally, on fiscal concerns, there's a lowering of property values. That Shadow Creek will be surrounded by detention basins, and that will be detrimental to our values. It's been stated many times that none of these projects will go ahead without public consensus, and so far, everywhere across the board, at San Domingo, at Memorial Park, those were struck down due to public opposition. Lefty Gomez is being opposed, and now Sunnyside. We plan to oppose Sunnyside, Lefty, and Loma Alta with everything we have, both as, you know, on the political forum, legally, whatever we need to do to oppose it. We feel very strongly against it. And we're talking, you know, Tressel Glen, Shadow Creek, and Baywood Canyon. So, that's, we basically look for your support. You need consensus to make this to go forward, and we all oppose it strongly. We'd like your support. We'd also like to be put on the agenda for next meeting so we can get a review of this, and if you can get Flood Board 9 to give us a review and update by that point.
Let me, let me just, if I may, because I can clarify a few things without discussing the merits of what you said. I think it might be helpful if I and perhaps, I don't want to speak for her schedule, Supervisor Rice and maybe one of our experts could come out if you want to have a community meeting.
We've done that.
Can you speak up, please?
Can't hear you.
Sure. If you want, we can come by and discuss this with you in greater detail.
We've had a community meeting with Rice and Lewis at Shadow Creek, and then there's scheduled meetings later in the month for Shadow Creek or for Tressel Glen and Baywood Canyon.
Okay. The other is that the next meeting of Flood Zone 9, I think, is on the 20th or 21st of September.
Right.
So, it would be, I think, most appropriate to agendize it if you wish, to talk about it again in the October meeting.
Which happens-
Rather than September. Right, right after the 21st, so when we meet the first Wednesday of October would be, I think, a more appropriate time.
So, when do you, so when do you meet in October?
We meet in September.
Right. So, that's after this whole deal's done, after you close-
What deal?
The Sunnyside purchase.
No, 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 I know nothing about a deal closing. They're doing some-
Sure you do.
No, I don't. They're doing some investigation right now on the suitability of soil samples and the like, but I know nothing about the fact that they're cutting, cutting a check to the three, to the family.
Well, they're in a, they're in a-
They're in a contract situation.
Purchase agreement contract, right.
No, I'm sorry. All of you would have to come out and speak into the mic so it gets on the radio.
Yeah, yeah.
Why don't I just suggest, I'll check in with Supervisor Rice's office, see about meetings, but I will not be here in September for the meeting, and since I'm the liaison, it would be most appropriate for me to be able to address. And so, again, I think the October meeting would be best because that's only two weeks or so after the September meeting.
I'm sorry, what October meeting?
Council meeting in October.
Okay, the October meeting here.
Right, because you said you wanted to have a September conversation, and I'm suggesting the October.
No, no, the next meeting, which would be October.
Great.
Right, yeah, agreed.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for your time.
You're back.
All right, thank you. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Gabriel Cordy.
Hello, my name is Gabriel Cordy. I was here at the last meeting, and it was, the main event seemed to be a proposition or amendment for commercially zoning, redefining the commercial zones to allow medical centers on the first floor of Fairfax, or first floor business. I'm not exactly sure what it was called at the moment, I can't come up with it off the top of my head, but I sat through the whole meeting, and there was about 20, 25 people that got up to speak, and every single person spoke against it, to not be, it was up for vote to be voted to the next stage. There was a guy that drove two and a half hours away from his family vacation, who was a local, to speak against this proposition. There was not one person that stood up speaking for it, and it was actually voted ahead anyways. It was like, I think only one person voted to have some more time. The main issues was, it seemed like people were upset about it, they thought that it would harm the community, and the other main issue was that it was very confusing, and people were simply asking more time before it was voted on to the next stage, and getting closer and closer to being official. It was, seemed like the main issues were that it was going to allow more industrial situations and more housing developments that might be blanketed or called affordable housing when, you know, they actually aren't. It was a very complicated thing, obviously, but I sat through the whole meeting and I did not get up to speak, because it was, seemed to be completely obvious, and it seemed overkill and repetitive for me to say something, because it was literally, everyone had said exactly what I had said, you know, 20 times over, but it was still voted through. I'm just trying to bring that to an awareness of everybody, because, you know, it's like, what, what is the point of us getting up here to speak our minds, and as locals, as community members? People were speaking very intelligently and very passionately about it, it obviously meant a lot to people. So why was it voted forward? Why do people want this pushed forward when 100 percent of the locals that showed up spoke, you know, violently against it? That's, that's all I have to say. Cool.
Okay, thank you. I really actually very much appreciate that you brought this to us, and the way you've grappled with the issue and trying to make sense of what happened. That was a planning commission meeting on July 21st, and the, the issue is, is very complex, people come in at different times in the conversation, but your voice is very appreciated. Just to reassure you, that item that they voted to go forward will come to council, we will have a discussion on September 7th to work with some of the things that were brought, and to hear the public's concerns, and this is no done deal, this is just an opportunity, the planning commission believed they had done their job, and now it's time for us to work with it, with you. So please do come on September 7th, we look forward to the collaboration, believe me, and it's an invitation.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I did want to just, you know, make sure that if we do show up, and if everyone is speaking with a solid voice against it, it would be recognized. That was just, it seems like it's an issue of trust.
Thank you, some of it is, is getting to some understanding, because the information is very easy to interpret or misinterpret, and we do it in different ways, depending on when we joined the conversation. I'm not going to go on, because this isn't an agendized thing, it will be on September 7th.
Okay.
And please take us at our word that we welcome you to come, and you should be heard, and you should understand the way we make our decisions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may too, Gabe, and for anyone else, I'd encourage everyone to look at the proposed zoning change, and it'll be on our agenda, which will be on our website roughly five days before our September 7th meeting, but it is currently on the website. If you go to the planning commission meeting for July 21st, and you click on the package, you can see the entirety of the zoning change. It is complicated, and I would encourage everyone to take advantage of the opportunity to read that ahead of time, so that, you know, we can, we can all discuss it. And it is available now on the website, in pretty much the form that we'll be getting it, so encourage everyone to take a look at that.
And to finish this, please, I invite you honestly to come and speak to us, to ask your questions, it's hard in a public forum sometimes, a lot of different people speaking very passionately and intelligently. We all have a lot to say, and we would love to engage in conversation with you. You can call me, and, and let's, let's talk and work together going forward. Okay, next, please.
Hello, my name is Josiah Louise, and I own Casa Manana on Bellinas Road. I'm here tonight to actually kind of back up what Gabe was saying about how confused we all were by the town planning amendment that happened a few weeks ago, and how surprised we all were as a community that it passed to you guys so quickly, with the exception of Mimi. And despite your reassurances just now to him, you know, when it's all said and done, we all go on the website, and it's this big old document, that, you know, these are all college graduates behind me, and they're still confused by it, so it's a big deal, you know, and what I'm here to do is I'm attempting to put more of a human perspective on it, because in a lot of ways, my business will be one of the first ones affected by it if it goes through. So what I'm here to say tonight is that I'm urging the town council to give the people of Fairfax, the community, a reasonable amount of time to digest and understand this proposal. I understand it's going to be coming before you in September, it'll give people time to look at it, but it's, it's going to have a deep and lasting impact in this community. My business, last time that we all met, there was talk in this booklet about retaining the village character of the community, and this thing, from what I can make out, is not going to do that at all. I mean, I've been here, I've been serving this community for over 17 years, and it's no exaggeration to say that in this time, I've seen the character of the community erode. The shops that are on Bellinas and Broadway used to be these funky mom and pop individual stores, and now they've, one by one, have become these slick, upscale, bobble boutiques that cater to weekend crowds. Some of these restaurants, they ain't for the people in this town anymore. This is a continuation, and this amendment, in my eyes, is also a continuation of this, you know? I can't, I can't express this more, I mean, imagine, some of your customers, some of your longtime customers, you know, imagine being on the porch, and just the way it's always been, you hanging out on the shop porch, eating your food, listening to music, there's people in the park that you know, people walking by that you know, that's a community, that's a village. The direction that the town's going in now, and this amendment, isn't going to keep that, it's going to take it away. So, you know, I urge people to, to really look at this, and also, like I was saying last week, there was, despite, and like, like Gabe said, last week, despite overwhelming public opinion to give us more time to review this amendment, with the exception of Mimi, everyone on the town planning commission passed the amendment. Now I'm telling you this because I want you all to realize how quickly this is happening, how quickly this is happening to your town, this is not an exaggeration. I'm speaking to my Casa Manana customers, the ones with the babies, the musicians, the poets, the ones who grew up here as family. I guarantee you that you will be affected in so many different ways by this. You're literally at a point in time where you can decide what is going to make up the future of this very special place called Fairfax, but so are the other people, whoever they are, that want this amendment to pass. You're on your way to becoming not the new San Anselmo, but the new Mill Valley. Your energy and diligence is required to prevent this from happening. Por favor, I hope to leave this place where I've spent so much of my time and cooked for you for so many years, with the knowledge that the future of Fairfax is not in the hands of greedy landlords or the highest bidder, but in the hands of the artists and weirdos and families who give Fairfax its true heart and soul. Please fight for your town, stop this amendment, thank you.
Thank you, Josiah. For clarification, September 7th, this will be a discussion item, this will not be coming before us on September 7th, that gives you time to read up, as Peter requested, to learn, to call us, to question, and let's move forward together, okay? Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Sandra Van Meter, I'm at 28 Shadow Creek Court, thank you for giving me the time. I am here to object to the basins at Lefty Gomez, as well as Sunnyside. We feel as a community that the basins are getting moved up into our community when San Anselmo chose not to have them in theirs. We don't feel basins belong in neighborhoods, we are highly concerned about the timing of these basins. The Sunnyside contract, as we discussed earlier, needs to remove contingencies by September 10th, which is right around the corner. So we are up against a wall here on what's going to happen with Sunnyside, they need to make a decision now, and we are adamantly opposed to those, both the basins at Lefty and at Sunnyside. Our neighborhood is surrounded by both of them, and we feel that we are going to be threatened by these basins, we are going, personally are going to be backed right up at what we feel will be a dam with the current conceptual design, which is a 14-foot wall directly behind our neighborhood, with a, with a dam gate right there. So this is not an underground basin that they had originally designed, it's above ground with a 14-foot wall. It doesn't belong in neighborhoods, we don't feel that we should take the risk of, of a basin that the town of San Anselmo, which is at higher risk, chose not to move forward on, don't believe it should be in our neighborhood. And we really feel that we were treated with disrespect and not being notified prior to the county going into contract for, for a basin adjacent to the community in Fairfax, we were not notified prior to that. And, and all along, it's been that, you know, there's going to be community support, and listening to community concerns, and that was not the case with this one, and, and we felt very slighted and insulted in how the county moved forward with the basin next to our neighborhood. So we appreciate your support in really having a voice in those basins, both at Sunnyside and at Lefty Gomez, they are a real threat to our neighborhood and the safety of our families. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, Glenn Miwa, I'm a homeowner in Shadow Creek, and I also have a, I've had a business in downtown San Anselmo for 30 years. I suffered through the 2005 flood, but was able to get back up within a few days. As a business owner in San Anselmo, I'm, I was willing to take the risk of another flood, I was there for 30 years, it happened once. Now I live in Shadow Creek in Fairfax, and having this basin next to our property would affect my property value, not to mention put a, a greater threat of a flood right in my backyard. So I just wanted to speak on behalf of myself, my family, I'm just completely against this turning out to be like a white elephant, it's a money hole, literally, with all the research that's been done and already spent on this and wasted, quite frankly, I, and the fact that we weren't notified was very upsetting. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kyle Redford, I live at 32 Shadow Creek Court, and I admit that it took me a while to get up to speed about the realities of water retention basins, and admittedly, it took being surrounded by, potentially surrounded by two of them to really get my attention. But after doing that kind of research, I don't think one has to be adjacent to the construction to be concerned about the cost benefits surrounding these potential projects, you know, including things like deferred flooding, so we're not going to have it in the downtown areas, but we're just going to move it into my backyard. The loss of a community gem, you speak of communities, Lefty Gomez Field has, it, it basically holds every community event in this area, in every recreational, you know, league practices and plays their games there, White Hill School uses it, it's, I, I don't think people have any clue that this is being, you know, optioned as a, you know, a potential loss to the community. The dirt removal alone in Sunnyside would be massive, would require massive amounts of dirt removal, the pollutants in the air, and the amount of traffic of the trucks leaving on already fragile Sir Francis Drake is huge, not to mention the massive costs that I don't think, I really am not confident that we're in control of the potential costs of this, I just lost my notes, excuse me. So these are just some of the many concerns that have been brought to my attention. Having said that, I sincerely appreciate and respect that there is all this pressure on our local politicians to respond to, you know, raising, raising all this, all these flood protection funds over the years, and, and showing some action, I get that. I would not want to be in your shoes, I totally understand that you want to move forward, but the, the thing is, I don't think that we've really, you know, done a deep dive about the potential costs, and whether or not we really have an appetite for, you know, the, the, do we really want to take on the, the financial environmental costs of this kind of, this scale of project? And assuming that it needs five, four to five retention basins to really be effective, and we're doing it like piecemeal, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. And I get why you target like a 10-person community, it's really easy to kind of write us off, so I get the, the consequences of being in a 10-home community. So I just feel like there's times when we want to pause and recognize that it might be time to really gather as a community and be brave, and look at whether or not all the thorough and thoughtful research that has been done, and I really appreciate it, has come back with a result that maybe not be all that palatable, and that we need to really look at it and be creative as a community, and acknowledge like, wow, maybe after we know all this stuff, we really, the cost isn't worth the, the benefit of the dam, the retention basins, thank you.
Before you go, wait, 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 wait. Again, can't speak to the specifics, but while you were speaking, the other members of the community, I was thinking about how you could get effective responses from the entire Flood Zone Nine Advisory Board, when it meets at 7 o'clock on Tuesday, September 20th, and in the San Anselmo Town Council Chamber.
Great.
And in the agenda that comes out, every single one of the projects gets an update at every meeting, and they'll go through all the detention basins, they'll go through all the different projects that we're doing. And of course, at the end of that discussion by staff, there's an opportunity for public comment. So I think, because one of your neighbors suggested that the supervisor or other members have come out and chatted with you, because what I'm hearing from you and your neighbors is at odds with my understanding. So you should come, take all of your collective questions, and you should, I urge you to come to the Flood Zone Nine meeting and ask those questions, because when you're there, you're going to be able to get answers from the collective staff.
But here's, here's what has, in reality, happened, is that, I'm not playing dumb, we had that meeting, and there weren't good answers, the science still isn't in on it, the science isn't reassuring, we can't be reassured right now that, about the truckloads of dirt. We can't be reassured right now that, about the truckloads of dirt. There's so much not known, even, even the plan to go 14 feet deep. Right next door to it, our neighbors dug a pool and they hit water at 10 feet. There's so much that is not understood about the potential, you know, costs and risks of this project that I, what we're, what you're sensing is a community panic.
Okay.
Because we don't feel like we have the time.
Please.
So, yeah, yeah.
I, I need to interrupt the conversation here.
You need to.
I'm very pleased that we will agendize this. If I understand correctly, we've decided to agendize this for October.
Renee, you can agendize it, but I really have to stress to the community that agendizing it, raising your concerns, and to the extent that I can, I'll be more than happy to answer your questions. But having the entire county staff available to answer your questions on September 20th is going to far exceed the modest ability of me to accurately, fully, and comprehensively address the problem. So, I really have to say, even if you've heard it five times.
And, and read the plan.
And read the whole kit and caboodle. Come to the meeting on the 20th and then come back here in October as well, but do not miss that opportunity.
I appreciate that. No, we will. We'll seize it. I appreciate you suggesting it. Thank you so much.
I think I just want to mention one thing. I've gone to a Flood Zone 9 meeting, so it's not just technical staff that are there. The full Flood Zone 9 Board is there, and David's one of the members, and I think they should hear the Board, not, I mean, I think it's good for the technical staff, but I think the Board should hear the concerns that you all have. So, I think if you can do that as well, that would be helpful.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, next.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Handel and I live at 13 Deer Creek, which is actually Trestle Glen, and I'm here to represent our neighborhood. We had an entire neighborhood meeting. It's August, everyone's on vacation. I wish I were, but everyone in the neighborhood is very much opposed to this project. And 28 years ago, when my husband and I bought our house, we purposely bought the house next to Sunnyside so we wouldn't have a neighbor, and it's worked out beautifully for 28 years. And Jim Perry, who owns it, always said, "If anything happens here, it'll be four or five beautiful homes." And we're like, great, that'll be great. To come to this frustration that is very upsetting to everybody, not only because the devalue of the neighborhood, people that live in our neighborhood that have been trying to sell, as soon as they hear about this project, they bail. So, it's a concern for all of us on every level, and I just wanted to let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Catherine Hall.
Hi.
22-band chair away from Fairfax, and my daughter is a fourth generation from Ross Valley. So, I've been here a long time, and my family's been here a long time, and I moved to Fairfax 12 years ago, and I've flooded twice. Can I have a show of hands how many have flooded? Just us, okay. And, you know, as, as a town, we have to, owe you to do, sorry. We have to move together, planning for the future, because the community here that well represents themselves takes up a good point. That community was, you know, incorporated into Fairfax after, and the watershed issues were never dealt with, and they should be dealt with before anything's built. And, and I say that because, you know, and I know there's another agenda item later, and it's the putting the houses, the affordable housing or the 63 units across from where I live in Fairfax, and there's no watershed. There's just, our, our communities, not just Fairfax, tends to move forward in, in small increments, and we don't look at the larger issues, and I really think that we need to do that. Because I, you know, and then I've also, I've flooded twice, and I've had about five near floods, so it's very, very disturbing. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for providing that perspective.
Hello.
Hi.
Thanks for the chance to have some comments. My name is Robin Berry, and I live at Baywood Canyon, I live in Baywood Canyon, the neighborhood. I lived there for 20 years, and there are a lot of experts in this room who are really well-versed on the proposed flood solutions, and they, they're, they know how to speak to that, and so do you. I want to pick up on a word that was mentioned in another comment about a different topic, industrialization. I think what people, there's mostly people, our neighbors are in this room, but what got my attention was a giant concrete wall down Sir Francis Drake, that's about a quarter mile long. A giant concrete wall. That is, that is concrete in Fairfax, this is, that doesn't represent the feel of Fairfax, of Marin County, of the rural area. If you think about what it's going to take to make that concrete wall, which is authorized currently to be up to 18, up to 14 feet, so let's say they scaled it back to 10. It's still a 10-foot wall. There are probably about 20 trees that have to come out to do that. The scale of building that wall alone just to enable the flood basin is massive, and it doesn't fit in with Fairfax or the, or Marin County. That, that wall affects everyone who values the space and the beauty of, of our area. That for a solution, again, that our neighbors, who we support, weren't willing to take on themselves, seems a bit hard to, a bit hard to take, and I think if it happened, and we, we are going to do everything we can to prevent it, I don't think it's a matter of educating. I think we're pretty well-educated on it, but if it happened, I, I think 10, 15, 20 years down the road, anyone who drives by is going to say, what, what in the heck were those politicians thinking? What is this industrial solution for a flood every 20 or 30 years when they didn't even bother to clean out the creek?
Hi.
Hi, my name is Tom Vogelheim. I'm at 9 Maiden Lane, and thank you for listening to us. You guys have incredible patience, and I appreciate it. And I'm not going to try to repeat all the reasons why we oppose the detention basin. I'm a CPA, so I tend to get less emotional about these things, and that was expressed so well by the others, but thinking more just in terms of dollars and cents. As a Town Council of Fairfax, I would want to think about, if I was in your shoes, what kind of potential costs are we absorbing if those detention basins are built? Are we potentially going to have to manage those or monitor those in, in the future? Is there a cost we're absorbing if there is damage because of those detention basins failing? And then on the flip side, I would say, why not build those five or six homes in Sunnyside and bring those into the Fairfax tax base, and that would bring some income into us as well? So, those are just two considerations to add on to everything else that people have expressed today. So, thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Okay, one more. Hi, Wendy.
Hi, I'm Wendy, and I live in Fairfax. And I, I just want to keep reiterating, I know I came here in May and asked for the town to really pay attention seriously to our rental crisis and affordable housing issues, and I know that there's different ways that the town cares and is trying to work on those issues, but I just want to reiterate that people who live here now, who've lived here for a really long time, are being thrown out of their houses. I'm one of them. Our rents have been raised in crazy, ridiculous ways that we all know about, and I was shocked when I asked for the town to pass a state of emergency for rental, as part of a rental crisis that, that we all know is going on all around the Bay Area. And I was shocked to find out that our Affordable Housing Committee hasn't met in maybe almost two years. So, I appreciate that the Affordable Housing Committee met last week, and I really want to see something real happen. I know that, I know the town feels like your hands are tied because of laws that already exist, and because we don't have money, and because we're small, and blah, blah, blah. And I still want to see us look into what it would mean to declare a state of emergency and to stop all the evictions and to stop the rent increases and to work on that and to work on those of us who have been living here now and not just, not just issues about bringing in more affordable housing. And I sit here and wonder, what is the definition of affordable housing at this point? Because I don't think it's clear to anybody anymore, just like, it's not clear what, you know, what, what fair market rate is anymore. There's no definition of any of that at this point. And I'm watching me and so many other people basically become homeless, and I, I don't want to see lip service. I want our town to do something. Thanks.
Thank you, Wendy. Hi, Liesl.
I'm Liesl. I live in Fairfax, so I just kind of want to reiterate what Wendy said, and I want to thank the town for having convened the Affordable Housing Committee. I thought it was a really great conversation with people, really listening to people in the town talk about their concerns. I think we tend to forget that a lot of people, you know, are making a lot of money off of the situation the way it is now, and we all need to make a living, and it's fine to make money, but it should be a decent amount of money and not in a way that destroys the community. So, I want us to really think about the fact that 51% of Fairfax renter households pay more than 30% of their income to rent, and probably about 85% of households that earn under $50,000 a year are overpaying for rent. It's really hard. According to researchers with the UC Berkeley Urban Displacement Project, Fairfax has a census tract that is undergoing displacement of low-income households. The researchers noted in their May 2016 report that while both market rate and subsidized housing creation reduces displacement pressures, subsidized housing is twice as effective, so that's going to have more bang for your buck if indeed any housing is built at all. But at the same time, in overheated markets, the displacement crisis will require aggressive preservation strategies in addition to housing creation to stabilize the community, and they concluded that we really need to look beyond housing development alone to strategies that protect tenants and help them stay in their homes. So, I hope Fairfax will take a multi-pronged approach to preserving housing affordability by both asserting tenants' protections and embracing possibly some limited targeted subsidized housing and infill sites. And I think it'll really make us a more just, sustainable, economically and ethnically balanced community, and just wanted to end with saying that in Stinson Beach, there was a small housing complex that was bought, and it was instigated by a real estate agent who worked with the property owners. So, we know that real estate agents and property owners and landlords can do really a great thing by working with the community to protect their community, and I hope we can do that here in Fairfax. Thank you.
Thank you, Liesl. Okay, so we will close open time and reorganize ourselves. So, moving on to consent. Yes, a five-minute break has been requested. Thank you all for coming. So, David, I would like to invite you to the dais. Here we go. Okay, everyone, let's begin with the consent calendar. Anything that you all would like to discuss, poll?
Mayor, I, there are two items I would like to. Item number six regarding the police vehicle and the, the new lease, for the new police vehicle, replacement vehicle. And item number eight, because we do have someone who wanted us to address that, and we did pull that from the consent calendar before, and I think it'd be good to discuss that again briefly.
So, item six, you would actually like to poll, to have a full discussion, because that would, that would keep the chief here unless we...
Yeah, we could do that. I propose doing that next, and then item number eight.
Okay.
So, can I ask a question on item eight? Is there actually somebody here? Because the last time we discussed it, we agreed we would have a more clear staff report in that it could be on consent, so is there someone here to discuss that item?
There was one member of the public, yeah.
I just want to make a comment on one item, and so we don't need to poll it?
Okay.
Should I do that now?
Yes.
So, on the item dealing with the yellow school bus program, item nine, I agree it's a very worthy project, and it's a reasonable cost to be asked, that's being asked of us, but I think it is problematic that this was not discussed at budget hearings. And the way I sort of was brought to my attention is I got a thank you from Supervisor Rice, otherwise I wouldn't have known about it. And so, I think we need to be really careful on these kinds of things, that when we know about them, that we bring them at budget hearings, and so I understand it was an oversight, so that's fine. But the other thing I want to bring up is, should we continue this next year? I know that Measure J, which was the parcel tax that we worked on a couple of years ago, pays for a number of things, safety as well as youth and senior programs, the trails. And so, I know that Measure J actually feeds the general fund, but in the future, should we take this up again and agree to fund it again, let's specifically take it out of Measure J, because it clearly is a youth program.
Barbara, not to interrupt, but I actually would like a slightly longer conversation on that item. So, besides the fact that I need to pull item five because I need to recuse myself, it looks like we have a request to pull item six and eight, and the yellow school bus item is, which number?
Nine.
And nine. Okay, so we got that. Five, six, eight, and nine. So, we have agreement on that?
So, do you want to do public comment, and then we could get a motion to approve parts of the consent calendar?
Yeah, I think.
Or how about this? Why do we have to pull five? We're not going to discuss it. You just want to recuse yourself so you don't have to vote on it.
Exactly, but we need to approve the whole consent calendar, so it needs to be voted on separately.
Abstain from number five. Abstain from your vote on five.
Janet?
Yeah, but visibly, you're pulling it, but you're voting on it right after she walks down.
Right afterwards, right. It's not until the end of the meeting.
Okay, so let's hear from the public. Is there any public comment on items on the consent calendar? Seeing none.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the...
Just one second, David. Garrett has something to add.
I'm sorry, we forgot to point out that Finance Director was just indicating he made a revision on the capitalization prop policy. It's on your dais before you made a correction, but I thought I'd let Michael let you know what that is.
Okay.
The correction is that the policy itself makes reference to $50,000. There was a resolution that had been passed in 2004 that changed our capitalization to $5,000. So, I have revised on there the number $50,000 to $5,000 per capitalization. So, that's not what the intent of the amendment that we had, that was to set specific limits. But our previous, but previously, there was a resolution passed in 2004 that set our limits, our limits, dollar limits at $5,000 for machinery and equipment, and so I reflected that in the revised policy. That's before you. That has already been passed. So, the, what you're passing is just dealing with specific lives of assets, so.
So, with the clarification provided by the Finance Director, I ask that we approve the following selected items on the consent calendar, 1 through 4, 7, and 10.
Okay, so, motion winds off. Second lax. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're good. So, I'm going to recuse myself for item five.
Okay. Do I have to wait? So, in front of us, we have approval of the second six-month period contract with Sustainable Fairfax. Renee is part of Sustainable Fairfax, that's why she's left the room, and is there any comment from the public on this item? And is there any comment from the public on this item? Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve that second six-month period of the agreement with Sustainable Fairfax to implement the mandates of zero-waste grant, including public education, the outreach services related to recycling, and green waste.
Second.
Okay, so winds off. Coler, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Okay, so with all of your consent, can we consider these consent items now? Okay, so let's start with item six. So item six is the adoption of a resolution declaring a police vehicle as surplus, authorizing the disposal of the vehicle by public auction, and authorizing the town manager to sign a lease agreement not to exceed $22,600 for the purchase of a police patrol vehicle and mobile data terminals. And I think we have a staff report from Chief Moran.
We, in the fiscal year budget for 1617, we, I requested funds in the amount of $22,600 to replace one police vehicle and as many mobile data computer terminals as we can based on the math of what the actual vehicle ended up costing. So as it turns out, the vehicle that I intended on replacing, we are going to end up keeping because we have an issue with our 2012 Dodge Charger. We have three Dodge Chargers. Two of them are costing us an exorbitant amount of money in repair costs, not tires and oil changes, it's just mechanical failures that are just, it's out of warranty, and it's cost us in the past seven months $4,500 in component repairs. And then the latest thing that happened is the engine, a lifter, is out, and it's going to cost about $8,000 to repair that. So based on the unreliability of two of these three Chargers, I want to replace that rather than spend $8,000 to repair an engine on a car that continues to have mechanical issues. So we're going to replace it. We're not going to buy Dodges again unless there's proof down the road that they've fixed these problems. We have three of them, and two of them are horrible, and the other one's not too much better as far as the mechanical failures. So we're going to switch to the Ford Explorer Police Interceptor, which you've probably seen everybody in the Bay Area and across the country is getting. They're large enough for the equipment, and they've been reliable, so I'm hopefully confident that that will serve its purpose. And then the final price of the car will determine how many mobile data terminals we can get. The MDTs, as we refer to them, we purchased them originally in 2008, and while they're still barely working, they're on the Windows XP platform that is no longer... Yeah, exactly. Microsoft doesn't support that anymore, and we've actually had to upgrade it to Windows 7 or 8, I can't remember which exactly, just to get it to work on the system we use. So they've been well, they've served us well, but it's time to replace those as well. So hopefully I'll have enough to get six of them, which will cover the patrol cars. If not, I'll get five or four, whatever many we get based on this amount that we budgeted for. And again, it's on this lease purchase through, we call it, it's a company called PNC Financing. It's a lesser rate than we normally get through our Ford lease purchase program. And the four-year lease for this $22,600 will get us a car, and I'm hoping six MDTs, maybe five.
Okay, so questions of the chief?
Thanks, Chief. I just wanted to clarify, because there may have been a mistake in the staff report, or maybe I've misread it. So the $22,000 will be for a police car and also mobile data terminals? That's all included in that?
Correct.
And then what caught my eye was in a couple places, it says that the four-year lease is going to be $22,000 per year. Is that for the, is that correct? Because in the heading, it just says $22,000. It sounded like that was a total cost, and so it wasn't clear to me.
It's per year for four years.
And that's for the police car and the data terminals?
And the data terminals, all tax, license, equipment installation, the equipment itself for the car.
How much do the data terminals cost versus a car? Because a four-year lease, we're talking about $90,000 if it's $22,000 per year.
Yeah, it's roughly about $87,000 total for the car and the MDTs. The MDTs run, I just almost got my final price today on those, those are running between $58,000 and $6,200.
$58,000 and $6,200 per each mobile data unit?
Yes.
Over the course of four years?
Each computer, we'll just say $5,800. Each computer, let's say, is $5,800.
Okay.
So, and I'm going to get as many as I can without going over the $22,600 that we budgeted for, per year for four years.
And is that leasing those data terminals, or is that purchasing?
Yes, it's, we're able to finance those computers along with the purchase of the car. So it's all, it'll be all one transaction, one loan or lease through PNC Financing.
And is that more cost-effective than just buying these things outright? I mean, it just seems like an awful...
Well, it's not more cost-effective, because you're paying interest, basically you're paying interest. But the initial capital outlay, if you were going to buy the car and the MDTs upfront, it's a $90,000 hit right now versus $22,600 for four years. The interest is roughly, the interest on this proposal here is $3,000. So cost-effective, you're spending about $3,000 more than just purchasing it, but then you'd have to come up with that initial outlay of about $90,000 versus $22,000.
And the total cost of all the data terminals is for, is how much for all of them, all five?
Well, again, I don't have the final price on the computers. We're not going to spend more than we budgeted, so it's, if I can get six computers, I'll get six. If the total, based on the car and the final price of the computers, only lets me get five or four, then that's what I will get.
Okay, so the vehicle then is, it sounds like it's roughly about $60,000?
No, the car with equipment and installation is, with all the equipment and the installation's $49,000.
$49,000, okay. Okay, well, thanks, I appreciate that. I just wanted to get an actual breakdown on the cost of all these items.
Sure, you're welcome.
Okay, any other questions of the chief? Any public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution declaring a police vehicle as surplus, authorizing the disposal of the vehicle by public auction, and authorizing the town manager to sign a lease agreement not to exceed $22,600 for the purchase of a police patrol vehicle and mobile data terminals.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion, Coler, second, winds off. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, none opposed, so motion passes. Thank you, chief. Oh, yeah, you're staying. Great, we get you all night. So moving on to item seven.
Eight.
Eight, sorry. We did seven. Moving on to item eight, which is the adoption of a resolution authorizing the town manager or his or her designee to execute grant funding contracts, agreements with California Department of Transportation or Caltrans for the Parkade and other future street projects. So Garrett, could you give us a staff report?
Sure. As you may recall, last meeting in July, this came to you, and at that time, there were some questions related to the history related to the Parkade and what exactly are we approving. At that time, council agreed to continue the item, and we would provide in writing what we said verbally at the meeting, what the background is. And so for those interested, how this all came about, the Parkade is the reconstruction of the Parkade to make ADA improvements, pedestrian and bicycle improvements. Back in 2010, the council actually approved a conceptual study, which we call the Parkade Area Circulation Study, for the Parkade. Based on that study, the council applied for and received an OABAG grant in 2012. Since that time, actually, Caltrans has deferred funding, and actually, this past year, they eliminated funding for OABAG. But we were able, working with MTC and TAM staff, to actually get that funding reauthorized for this year, and that was just approved in May of this year. And so what we made clear at the last meeting, and what we'll make clear at this meeting, is that what you're actually approving is the authority for the town manager to actually just sign agreements with Caltrans, that one secures the funding, two allows us to, when we actually spend money for design for the Parkade, you could actually get reimbursed. So that's all we're doing. You're not approving any plan, you're not approving any design, you're not approving any construction. In fact, part of the town center plan process includes a discussion related to design to the Parkade. Ultimately, with the input you'll get from the workshops, the council then could take that, and it'll be at a separate meeting where you'll actually have to approve the preliminary design by which then we could actually begin design, and ultimately, you have to approve construction. So again, all this does is just let us actually secure the funding, and when we actually start designing something or charging to it, that we could actually get reimbursed by Caltrans.
Okay, thank you, Garrett. Any questions of staff? John?
Yeah, I guess going forward, you know, it also... Is that thing working? Yes, okay. Going forward, it also contains, you know, for future sidewalk and other improvement projects, and is there a cost limit on those, or, I mean...
Actually, all it was, was attempt by staff to make it so that we didn't have to take a resolution for everything that we get grant funding. Because Caltrans, what they require now, as you know, for the bridge project, is every bridge project, you had to have this resolution saying I was authorized to sign documents so that we actually could secure the funding, and when we start doing things, we could actually get reimbursed. So we're hoping it would be encompassing enough so that would satisfy it in the future. I don't know. Typically, it just depends on who you're working with, Caltrans, and they'll tell you if it's good or not good. In this case, we definitely need one for the Parkade.
Yeah, I mean, it just, it does, I mean, I know it's a pain for staff and for us, too. We have it coming up all the time, but it does provide, you know, a check, a point at which the public knows that things are moving along and we're checking in on things. You know, it was unfortunate last time that, you know, that was misinterpreted by a lot of the public as to meaning something that it's not. So I suppose it's a double-edged sword in that way, but I don't know, I guess going forward, it might behoove us at least to set some sort of a range, you know, underneath a certain amount of money or whatever.
Well, typically, as clarification, usually as the council, you're approving the submittal of the grant in the first place, so you know exactly what you're applying for, what you're receiving. This is the paperwork necessary to secure the funding. That being said, it is more work, but if the council wants to come back every time, that'd be fine. The only caveat is usually there's a timeframe by which to approve the documents.
So just, oh, do you have a question? Go for it.
I guess my feeling is all this resolution is dealing with the Parkade and other future street projects. It's not dealing with bridges, which I think we definitely want to deal with those separately. But to me, this is some of the administrative documents, and I think the more important thing is the grant document. So I would, I guess I feel that it's not just, I don't think it's necessarily a hassle for us or for staff, but I think it confuses people. So I think if we could consider going forward, this really talking about street projects, I don't think we would need to have a range on there, frankly, that's my personal opinion just hearing what Garrett just said. But I think it'd be nice for us to get this out of the way so we're not constantly bringing things that lead to confusion rather than the key things, which would be what the grant is. So I would rather kind of focus on those big-ticket items. That's my thoughts.
I think it's important, too, to, because there was a lot of input from, and questions by the public, I'm glad that we're just, again, taking the time to clarify that this is just to secure funding for design, and we're not going forward with any, approving any designs or funding for any kind of construction at this point. So I appreciate that additional clarification, Garrett, and, yeah, with that, I would propose making a motion.
Well, do we need to, anybody else have anything to say?
Or do we have public comment?
No, we need to go to public comment. Does any, anyone have anything to say out there? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back and entertain a motion. Peter?
Thank you. Make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the town manager or his/her designee to execute grant funding contract agreements with Caltrans for Parkade and future street projects.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have motion lax, second, Coler, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Motion passes. And then moving on to item nine. So this is an item, the approval of a contribution of $10,000 for the yellow school bus program for the Ross Valley School District for fiscal year 1617. Do you want to do a brief staff report, Garrett?
Okay, some background, Marin Transit actually was urgently contracting with Golden Gate Transit to provide public school bus service to Ross Valley School District. In June of 2015, Golden Gate Transit no longer provided that service, and what Marin Transit was able to do is negotiate a contract to provide school bus service, and we refer to that as yellow, the yellow bus program. They started that in 2015. In 1516, I think bus passes were, they've sold a decent number of bus passes, but in reality, there's a shortfall in the program. The county contributes about $125,000, Marin Transit $182,000, and actually, the town in San Selmo contributes $5,000. This year, we actually, with the school liaison subcommittee of the mayor and vice mayor, we actually met a couple of times with actually the school district and Marin Transit and the county, talking about ways to try to fill that gap. There'd be an increase, which they did, in fees, as well as what can we do to try to offset that, the program cost. It is fairly expensive, but the benefit is, obviously, it probably keeps 200 to 300 cars off the road during commute hours, which is a big deal, I think, especially in Sir Francis Drake, in Fairfax. And so with that, at that time, we, the subcommittee agreed that maybe we would put in, contribute $10,000. San Selmo agreed they would contribute $10,000. And we actually agreed we would discuss it as part of the budget approval process, and that's why we had it as a line item. But unfortunately, oversight on staff's part, we didn't discuss the item. But a little clarification is, even if it got to the point where someone said, "Oh, write us a check," that was a reminder that I'd have to come back to council for approval anyway, because something like that, we wouldn't do without council approval. But that being said, we recognize that, you know, we need to make sure we track that a little better. And I think one of the other things for this point, it's one-year funding, we're going to be talking about it again, they did increase the prices of passes. Unfortunately, the school district, even though the staff recommended it, the school board decided not to contribute anything to the program. I think the one question that someone asked is, is there still a subsidy program for kids that qualify for, I think, the lunch program? And the answer is yes, there's still a subsidy program. I confirm that with Marin Transit today. And that concludes the staff report.
I'm sorry, is that, that's a full subsidy funded by the district?
No, it's not a full subsidy. It's, they'll pay a lower rate. So if the passes right now are 700, if you're qualified, you would qualify, you'd pay 200.
Did the school district suggest why they were not contributing equally? Sorry, Renee.
No, no, that's okay.
Well, I did not attend the meeting, but my understanding is the argument they made was that their parents were contributing by buying the bus passes, and thus, that was their contribution to the program. Those are my words, second-hand, not, I can't confirm that was what they actually said.
Okay, so in terms of the subsidy, could you go back and explain that a little more? So they're getting it for, instead of paying the 700, the free and reduced lunch kids are going to get 200 or 300 passes, and who is paying the remainder? Who's absorbing that?
The remainder's the program. So if a pass costs 700, and a student who's eligible, whose family is eligible, they could get a pass for 200, the difference is made up by the program.
Okay, I understand, but last year, I believe the district paid for that shortfall in allowing and making sure that the free and reduced kids got their subsidy?
Yeah.
Okay, I just tried to...
That's what's unclear to me, because I know one of the issues brought up was with... would they be willing to just pay for that subsidy portion? And I think their answer this year was no. Whether or not they did it before, I couldn't tell you. I just don't remember.
Okay. Barbara?
So I find it kind of shocking that the Ross Valley School District will not contribute money to this and that, you know, part of the goal here is to get cars off the road, and we know that parents taking their kids to school is a huge impact on traffic. So I think it's great that we're contributing to this, but I would just ask the liaisons to the Ross Valley School District that, I think it's shocking. Some parents think $700 is too much. I frankly don't think so if they added up their time and the amount of time that they're driving back and forth doing five mile trips. But I guess I would just ask my worthy council member, mayor and vice mayor, that I think you and your colleagues really need to push them hard. I think it's egregious, they have quite a large budget, that they're not at least contributing something and a minimum covering that subsidy shortfall. But I want to say that I think it's a great program and I think it's a reasonable ask to us, so I completely appreciate it.
I think Barbara is spot on here for the conversation you have to have with them. One of the things that I recall from a year or so ago, when we had the CH to CC conversation, was folks were rightly concerned about traffic. I also recall, and the number's a little hazy, but I believe that the morning traffic is increased by, the number that I recall is 4% from the school time transportation. And while 4% in and of itself is not that high a number, that 4% taken off the road would be a significant loosening of a tight arterial. So to me, to hear that the school district is, is not doing this, I think is unequitable. But beyond that, they're gunking up our ability to make a cohesive and thorough conversation with our community about how the addition of X units in Y places will not exacerbate a difficult situation. So I completely support what Barbara's saying, please go back to them and say, "You need to revisit this on a multitude of strata."
Okay. I couldn't agree with you more, and we will.
Yeah.
Absolutely do that. I know that Garrett has been involved in the conversation as well and has encouraged them to the point of where we needed to make sure that we had some safe boundaries, but staff did recommend it, which is a, which is a big step forward in my mind. The yellow bus program being subsidized by Marin Transit to the point where, you know, they're paying the lion's share of this and then the county paying is unprecedented and in the county right now, because there are many cities that are adding these programs, this is not a sustainable model. We are the only one that is really being subsidized and other cities are actually stepping up to pay Marin Transit for their administration. So we know this is not going to work going forward, it's a vital, vital service, and it's well used. My other concern, and I'm not sure if this is really the pulpit to say this from, is that without subsidizing those free and reduced lunch kids, they don't get to ride the yellow school bus. They get full subsidy on the regular Marin Transit route, which means that those kids go down to Sir Francis Drake and they get on the regular bus where the others who can pay for their ticket go on the yellow school bus. So for me, this is a really big deal, and that conversation will come and we will start early next year in terms of how we're going to fund this going forward. Anybody else, anything to say? Any comment from the public?
No, I'd just like to add to...
Sorry, Peter.
It is worth it, just as a kind of social equity to help fund school transportation. And also the benefit, the traffic benefits really do come into play during the most busiest time of traffic. So if you have that 4% reduction when the streets are at 100% capacity, that's when it has a lot of benefits. So I think that is a, it is a benefit to the whole community and it, I think that justifies us as a town contributing, and so many of our citizens also have, will benefit from that too. So, you know, you pay for it one way or another, but I think it's, it's a worthwhile contribution for us as a town to make.
Okay, so now we're going to go out to the public, so come on up to the podium if you'd like to speak. And then just go ahead and push the button and tell us your name.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
I just wanted to sort of support what you were saying regarding the school program. I took, this was granted, you know, 12 years ago, but when the Golden Gate Transit was operating to get to White Hill to and from school, it was a great opportunity because my mother worked early in the morning, it was hard to get from school, and a lot of times it may be too far for people to ride their bike or to walk, and how are they going to get to school? So it was, it was really beneficial for me and I think something that as children, they're probably not going to think it's too important, but the parents, and looking back on it, it was really, it really helps the community, and now as a person driving, it's, it's also great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. John, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, yeah, it's $10,000 well spent. I mean, when we brought this up in the meeting, it was still up in the air whether the school board was going to pony up their share. And really, yeah, I, I think, I agree with my fellow council members that it's unconscionable for them not to, and in fact, I, when, I recall when we first started safer school, the figure was 27% around the vicinity of schools of the tra, I mean, it's, people know driving around, it gets really clogged when everybody's trying to drive their kid to school and just, it's not a good system at all. And so buses help that a lot, bicycles help that a lot too, you know, around elementary because it's closer. I would hardly endorse this, our subsidizing it, basically even if you don't have kids in school, it really unclogs the streets and it's effective.
Okay, so can I entertain a motion?
I just want to add one thing...
Oh, sorry, Barbara.
But then I would like to make a motion, is just also with more people riding the bus, it's safer with the kids on bikes and walking because there's less cars. So safety as well as less traffic. So I'd like to make a recommendation to approve the contribution of 10,000 for the yellow school bus program for the Ross Valley School District for FY 1617.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, so motion Kohler, second Reed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
We have several folks in the audience, and I'm wondering if we could move the council reports and town managers' reports to after the public hearing and the regular agenda, just so folks maybe...
That's fine with me, everybody? All righty, so let's move on to the, first item is a public hearing, which is number 11.
And can I interject that I need to recuse myself? I live right next door to this project, so I will be in the kitchen.
Yes, we'll call you back. All righty, so item number 11 is the adoption of a resolution establishing the methodology for the traffic study required for a traffic impact permit for a 54-unit senior housing project located at 2626 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, otherwise known as the Christ Lutheran Church property. Jim?
Yes.
Staff report, please.
Be glad to. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council and members of the audience here and also at home, watching live or later. On June 16th, our Department, Department of Planning and Building Services received an application, long awaited application, for the Christ Lutheran Church Senior Housing Project. The application was for 54 units of low and very low senior housing, with one of those 54 units being onsite manager's unit. One of the several permits that this project application is going to have to address is the section in the code requiring traffic impact permits for projects that trigger over 100 new trips or are over 5,000 square feet, and this project does both. Likewise, in the town code, under the traffic impact permit section, it requires that the town council approve how the traffic study is going to be conducted before the traffic study is actually conducted. So that's what's before you tonight, not approval of a plan of the, of the project, not approval of the traffic study, approval of the methodology of how the study will be conducted. That's it. So attached to the staff report is a resolution that if you agree, approves the methodology, and a part of that resolution is a letter from our town traffic engineer, Mr. David Parisi, who could not be here tonight, he's on vacation. And that letter, I just want to take a moment to go through to articulate for the benefit of the public that may be here or watching and interest. Mr. Parisi recommends that this project application that requires a traffic impact per, permit, the methodology for the study, and the project's called, by the way, Victory Village, that basically four key approaches to the methodology. It would be vehicle trip generation analysis of the existing and proposed conditions for the weekday daily, AM peak hour and PM peak hour, as well as weekend peak hour. Second, intersection level of service assessments for weekday AM and PM peak hours at Sir Francis Drake Boulevard's intersections with Mitchell Drive, and that's the drive immediately in front of the, the project site, Alhambra Circle, which is slightly upstream, if you will, up the canyon, next major intersection, and then downstream, if you will, at Klaus Drive. Third bullet, assessment of driveway conditions at Mitchell Drive, and that would include vehicle turning needs, site distance, et cetera, and also at an alternative driveway location, which is just slightly east of the existing driveway. And the reason for that is the property currently has an easement for the driveway and the utilities under the ground, under that driveway. They're going to have to do some work to change the, the physical width of the driveway and at a sidewalk, and they're going to have to improve the infrastructure. That property in front of the church's property is actually part of Canyon Village property. They, they control Mitchell Drive in front of it. So the resource, the applicant, Resources for Community Development, which is abbreviated RCD, is going, is reaching out to the homeowners, homeowners association, and Barbara lives there, that's why she had to recuse herself, and will be discussing the right of entry and the continued use of that easement. If some, for some reason, they can't reach an agreement on the continued use of that easement on Mitchell Drive, the actual property of the church fronts Sir Francis Drake to the east, so there is an alternative if they can't reach an agreement with the HOA. And rather than have to go back through this again, Mr. Parisi suggests, and the applicant suggested, that we analyze the alternative driveway location at this time also. And then lastly, the fourth bullet, the fourth bullet is, all analysis shall be conducted for existing traffic levels, existing traffic levels plus the project itself, how many trip generations will come from the project, the accumulation of all that, the cumulative, and the cumulative plus project conditions. In other words, all the growth around, and, and then finally assuming general plan traffic levels. And that means the general plan envisions a certain build out of the town, and that was what was actually analyzed by Mr. Parisi in 2012, excuse me. So that completes the traffic, sorry, the staff report, but I would just emphasize that now is the time, after you've heard from the public and had any questions you have of us answered, if you think that there's some other portions that should be looked into, this is your time to discuss that and amend these recommendations in any way you feel fit. And then lastly, what's going to happen next is, Mr. Parisi will actually be conducting this study himself, because the town code on traffic impact permit says that when in fact a traffic impact permit study is done in conjunction with an environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act, that both will be done under the purview of the town at the applicant's expense, and that's what we're doing. The process again will be, the study takes place, that along with the other materials relative to the other permits that are required for the project going forward, will go to the planning commission, and if approved, the traffic study will still come back to you for final approval. Okay? So you approve the methodology, the study's done, it gets packaged with the application, goes through the planning commission, and let's assume the project is approved, it's, the traffic study still has to come back to you for final approval. It's, it's the unique process to Fairfax. Hopefully that's clear.
Go ahead, Peter.
I'm curious, Jim, is, if we get more information about the project, do we have any options to change the methodology to match any changes in the project that might come along?
The study will be the study, and the, it's, it's based on what has been applied for, and there won't, the project can be, well, it's going through a series of reviews for outside agencies and internal agents, internal departments, and, but the, the general character of what's being applied for, the 54 units, we don't envision changing. So I'm not sure if that answers your question or not.
Well, yeah, I'm just wondering if, you know, we're sort of approving a certain methodology, and I'm just wondering if there are changes to the plan, if it would warrant looking at the methodology, if it, if the plan changes much?
The short answer is, I don't believe so.
Okay. And then I just want to get your opinion if you think that this methodology is appropriate for, for this project.
Well, I'm, I'm not a traffic engineer, and I have to rely on the expertise of the town's traffic engineer, but having said that, as an urban designer and planner, it does seem to cover the bases, and I think it's also fortuitous that we have Mr. Parisi, who's our contract traffic engineer, doing this in concert with his analysis under the California Environmental Quality Act review that'll be going on parallel, sequel review.
And, and I'm wondering too, if the intersection analysis, do you have any sense whether you think that's sufficient to just consider Mitchell Drive, Alhambra, and Klaus Drive? Should we be looking at, you know, further downstream Sir Francis Drake impacts on traffic?
Well, at this point, no, but there have been occurrences at the planning commission level where they've heard from the public, and you could well hear from the public tonight also, where you learned something you didn't consider. It has, on occasion with the Chevron gas station, they, they asked for further analysis at that point from the applicant's traffic engineer, when they actually looked at the study, they, they kicked it back for further analysis. So, and, and I suppose at the end of the trail with you all, I, I guess that could happen too.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Anybody else? John?
Yeah, sure. Well, I wonder if it would behoove us to, I mean, I don't know how much it increases the cost to add other intersections. For instance, Oak Manor is the next closest intersection that's major, and I can see why Klaus is picked because it's right in the middle of town. But, especially during rush hour, there's a lot of clogs in a lot of places along there. And, you know, I don't know that Klaus is the biggest one, it's just one of many.
If you have any concerns of any of those intersections, I would encourage you, now's the time to weigh in and amend the methodology to include what you have concerns about.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and, and, you know, in intersections, I mean, it's kind of a... Yeah, and, you know, in intersections, I mean, it's kind of a what-if kind of situation. I know that when that project was originally conceived, there was a school there, and there was a church there, both of which were designed to keep on going. Garrett is signaling a lot of stuff.
If I may, I think for something like this in methodology, it's really a traffic engineer we're relying on. Pre-C transportation consulting happens to be our town traffic engineer, so we do rely on him. So what we could do is, rather than actually picking intersections related to level of service, we're fine as staff going and asking him, the concern was, do you make sure you have all the intersections you believe are appropriate to study? Because he probably, probably had a good reason why he didn't think it was necessary, and then we leave it up to him to add or subtract what he thinks is appropriate. But Jim is correct, at times, the planning commission, looking over the report, could ask for subsequent studies. And to answer Councilmember Lax's question, is typically what would happen, if the project changed dramatically, then we'd do additional traffic analysis if warranted. However, it was deemed that was less intensive use, I'll make this up, around 54 units, it turned back to 40, then you wouldn't do any additional analysis because you have less traffic. So that's typically how it works.
And can I just add one thing that I didn't mention, since you did talk about the school going away and whatnot? The school has been away for more than a year, I believe, and there is a caveat in the code, it's over 5,000 square feet, so it needs it anyway. What I'm trying to say is, the traffic level when we first envisioned this project has actually gone down because the school's no longer there, and the church is actually kind of folding up operation. I think there's a few people that are still going. So the good news is that the actual impacts are going to be less than originally envisioned.
Sorry, I got distracted by our seal blowing.
You might want to hear from the public, too, in case.
That's what I'm going to do. So, anything else up here? No other questions? So let's go out to the public. If anyone has a comment, please come up to the podium, otherwise, we can't record you. Oh, it is the public hearing, so I'm opening the public hearing. Thank you. Hi. So go ahead and push the button, and tell us your name and address if you're comfortable doing so.
My name is Alicia Klein, and I am a Berkeley resident. I work for Resources for Community Development, which is developing the senior affordable housing at the Christ Lutheran Church site, and wanted to appreciate the town's leadership on doing the California Environmental Quality Act study to make sure that the development meets the environmental standards and the care that you're taking to do it every step correctly, so I really appreciate that. And we are really excited that the town is considering the proposal to which is for the 54 affordable units for low and very low-income seniors, and we're looking forward to coming to the planning commission and town council in the next couple months. And I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Larry.
Larry Bragman, 30 Hickory. So I just wanted to follow up, actually, on Jim's comment, that the site has changed since we first considered this project. When, when it first came to us, I don't know how long ago it was, with your friend Matthew Edwards, or the...
The architect Matthew Tacker, I'm sorry, Matthew Thompson, yes.
Matthew Thompson. We met with the church, and at that time, there was an active church, an active school that took up two-thirds of the site. And our vision was to make sort of a little mini-village, where the school would sort of talk, speak to the housing, and they would share resources and that sort of thing. And in order to do that, we had to constrain the building site for the housing, and that's kind of how we came up with the 54 units, and it's sort of shoehorned into the front of the property. And the remaining part of the property, where the school and the sanctuary are, or were, were left, you know, outside the scope of the project. Well, that's changed. The school has relocated to St. Rita's. Unfortunately, the church has kind of shrunk in its attendance and in its membership. And so the reason I came to you tonight was for you to consider doing a traffic impact study for more units at the site. The reason we're at 54 units is because of the constrained footprint that we came up with in order to accommodate the school and the church. And like I said, circumstances have changed, and I would hate to see us get locked into this 54-unit number when possibly we could, you know, we could match Bennett House, which has 69 units. Maybe we could put 20 more units in. That would require us to change the footprint of the project. I think it would make a better project, because you'd have a more expansive site. You wouldn't have the risk of going over the height limit that you have now with the 54 units in this very constrained site. You would add additional housing units, which would take pressure off you on the central commercial zone, which I can sort of hear the rumblings are already out there in the community about really sort of a real distaste for changing sort of that iconic part of Fairfax. I think it could be a better project, and I guess my ask for you tonight would be to expand the methodology and to see, to do a study that would consider, let's say, 75 units at that site, which would have a ripple effect on the rest of the town, and probably, given a slight change in the footprint of the project, would actually be less imposing architecturally, and probably would not make that much difference as far as traffic impact from the proposed 54 units. So it's, it would be 16 more units, that's about 25%. And I wanted to come tonight because I just didn't want to see us locked into the 54-unit number. I think it would help RCD, the project is going to pencil out better for them. So I think there's a lot of benefits that flow from the simple act of ask, of expanding the scope of your methodology to consider another 16 units at that site.
Well, that's fascinating. Let's take it up. Can it be expanded?
That's not what the application is for.
Not, I realize that, but in concept, is it possible to return to the drawing board to expand?
Hang on, Jim, let me try. So if I understand correctly, with Mr. Bragman and Councilmember Weinsdorf, the concept would be, and I'm only talking about the methodology for the traffic study, is you're saying that perhaps in the traffic study, if you modeled for more vehicles, more units, what would that impact be? Set aside the issue that RCD, as the applicant, hasn't submitted an application for more units, set aside whatever work they've done, that would be an additional cost to figure that out. But if the issue is just modeling the traffic study, and there's incremental cost to doing that, we probably wouldn't have a problem paying for that, but that doesn't mean the application's going to change. It just means we're studying more units, so you could see what the impact would be. Because really, the reality is, off the top of my head, with the school and an active church, and you had 40 units, that probably created a lot of peak hour trips, a few more units, maybe it's a wash, but, so we could do that, but that doesn't change the actual application that's being submitted. That would have to be the applicant's decision.
Right. It just gives you more data to study if it pans out, if that concept would pan out, but I really, from my view, having sat through many meetings, design meetings with the church, with the community, it's changed. That site has changed, and the benefits that would flow from taking a look at expanding the number of affordable units at that site, you know, for the minimal cost of increasing the scope or the range of the traffic study, might be worth it for everybody, might be worth it for RCD, might be worth it for you as you go forward, and really look at the planned district development proposal. So thanks a lot, and I hope you give it some thought.
Okay, thanks, Larry. Let's take the next public comment.
Hey, Larry, before you leave, before, Larry, you leave, I appreciate the inventiveness to think about how that would relieve on the CCCH rumblings that you mentioned, but the community should know that it would only relieve it in part, and it would only relieve it for a certain number of years, say, six or seven, before the state came down with its heavy hammer on us again and relived numbers for us. So we can't walk it all the way away, we can walk it back away in part.
Let's, let's...
I think for Fairfax, what the community wants to see is affordable housing. This would accomplish it.
Thank you, Larry.
I think, hi, I'm Catherine Hall again, 22 Banter Way. I think that we're faced with this need to suddenly realize this project, because we haven't, as a community, dealt with this issue of housing, affordable housing and senior housing, but that being aside, I want to ask you, what exactly is the traffic impact? Is it just looking at Alhambra, or is it looking all the way Sir Francis Drake Boulevard to the Victory Village? How, what is that?
That was what I read from the traffic engineer's recommendations. It's three intersections, Alhambra, Mitchell in front of the project site, and Klaus Drive, and it's up to you to make a recommendation if you think that additional intersections should be studied.
Well, is it, is it just intersections, or are we looking at the impact of all the traffic?
It looks at the existing conditions of existing traffic, plus the project being added to that traffic flow. And it also models other potential projects that are envisioned in the general plan that was adopted in 2012, and the housing element that's been updated.
Okay, so if I were driving from San Onoflo all the way to the village, would it be taking me in consideration? Or just those traffic? That's where I'm...
Just those intersections.
I can't, I cannot believe that, because it's not just those intersections that are impacted, it's the whole Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. When you're looking at 63 new units, it's not just three intersections that's impacted.
Well, it's 54, 54 units are what they're applying for, and again, this is what our traffic engineer, who's a learned professional, is recommending, and the public hearing tonight is to hear from the public, which is what we're doing with you.
Thank you.
And they are at will to modify the study if they so choose.
Absolutely, please. I mean, it's, it's looking at San Onoflo to Fairfax. What happens to this traffic as a result of these homes?
The, yeah.
Plus, I also want to say, I think that there's an, the not, there's an incorrect portrayal of the school. The school probably had 60 kids at the most.
Can you speak a little more into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not too close, but that's great.
A misrepresentation of the school. The school may have had 40, 60 kids, it's not a big school, and it's a very small congregation. So to think that the small group that was there can be replaced by 20 more units is unrealistic.
Yes, but remember, those, we're talking here about a senior community, probably not as apt to make as many trips as, you know, parents and kids heading to the school.
Yeah, but that's also a little ageist here.
So it's low, I hear you, but let me just dive into this for you, because you're raising good points, which is, low income, very low income. The hope would be that most folks in that condition would not be expending scarce resources on the expense of an automobile, particularly since we have active bus lines running up and down.
But where are the people that are visiting going to park? What, you know, there's a big, you know, it slows out.
But we are just talking about traffic impact, and just about deciding upon a methodology.
Okay.
And these are all good and important things for us to consider. No, I hear you.
And the earliest, just so you know, the earliest we see this possibly getting on the planning commission docket agenda would be in September. Planning commission meets in this room on the third Thursday of every month. It's going to be a push to get all these things done by September. If you are within 500 feet radius of the project property, you will be notified. So you'll have another opportunity where we'll really get into the woods on the whole application, all the different permits that were required.
Right, but Jim, can I interrupt? So I have a question in terms of process here, and forgive me, Peter, Mark, John, if I've, what I want to understand is, we get these ideas from people, they all seem like very important ideas to explore. I need to ask your recommendation in how we proceed, because, yes, it seems like a very important thing to consider the possibility, given that it would help achieve some of our goals in terms of housing and affordable housing, so I don't want to just, I don't want that just to go downstream. Yes, how broad can a traffic impact study be without costing us the rest of the town's budget? And how does that work? But I don't, and I don't know if my fellow council members know enough, to be able to speak to that right now, although I, the last thing I would want to do is delay a project that has been more patient than I could ever imagine being. So advise us, or Jim, give me a response?
So I see the, I see Mr. Bragman's proposal for considering 20 extra units at the Christ Lutheran Church site as something independent of what's before you tonight and the application that is before, the methodology piece of the applications before you. We have an obligation to process the application that was submitted, and it may be a very fine idea to broaden the horizon on how many units can sit on that site, but it's been seven years to get to this point right now where this application's been submitted. And it was originally for 40 units, and there's been a lot of heartburn already that, under the density bonus law in the state, they're applying for 14 more units. So I think it's a disservice to the applicant to throw us off track from what's actually being applied for and our responsibility to model the application. The 20-unit idea, fabulous, let's vet it. It doesn't mean that couldn't happen after the 54 units, if approved, was built.
Well, don't you think it would be, it would make sense to speak with...
Can I address her comments? One of the things I think that's hard to get your mind around is, you know, the traffic that's going to be further down the Ross Valley in San Onoflo goes through Klaus intersections.
Yeah, no, I understand. I think what I'm talking about more is looking at Alicia, I always call you Alicia, Alicia? And I think it would be really important just to hear from you, because you're hearing that probably for the first time, I'm not sure if you've had a conversation with, with Mr. Bragman, to even get your response to that, because again, this isn't what we're deciding upon tonight, we're looking at methodology for traffic as it is by your application that is already submitted. So do you feel comfortable giving?
I do. I've, Mr. Bragman kindly pulled me aside in the break earlier to share the idea, and we, believe me, we would love to develop a bigger, more, make more units affordable to seniors in need. That does become more financially viable, the bigger that you get. However, the constraints that we're in right now do raise some problems for increasing the size. On the one hand, studying more units, you know, no harm in studying it, although the affordable housing development is the one footing the bill, so I am not inclined to, I would be worried about making a study that's a lot more expensive by studying the whole length of Sir Francis Drake. However, if it's, you know, adding a little bit of more analysis, that could give us flexibility in the future. However, adding units to the development is not feasible in our current timeframe that we're under. We have a purchase option with Christ Lutheran Church that expires at the end of 2017, and to do a redesign at this point will, I can almost guarantee you, make us miss the funding application rounds in early 2017 that we need to secure in order to buy the site by the end of 2017. Now, if we're unsuccessful in those funding applications, and we have, we are going to have a whole new conversation with the church to see if they're willing to... to extend time. And then we may have more time to actually add more units. Additionally, the church did ask us to buy the whole property, not just the front two acres. And so, in recognition of that, they asked for an additional purchase price of, they added $300,000 to the purchase price. So, if we make a larger housing development, we then constrain the rest of the land that we need to sell and make that same amount of money. So, we would just need to renegotiate with the church on a couple of items. So, those are, those are the concerns about changing the size. But again, if the analysis is just a little bit more analysis, a little bit more cost, that's okay by me. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Next comment, please.
Hi, my name's Fiona Rulak. I live on Banjero Way, which is right off of Alhambra. Just to make a couple of quick notes, it can take anywhere from 30 minutes to get to my house to downtown San and Semmo utilizing Center Boulevard. A couple just quick questions about this. Where will the parking go? Will additional tra, I know this is going into the study, so these are kind of things, a couple of things. Will additional lights be added? How will that impact the traffic? And this can make, this is, this will make navigating in and out of Fairfax even more of a nightmare than it already is. I personally noticed how traffic has greatly worsened since 2008, regarding the fact that it's going to be severely low income. I assume the eligibility requirement's going to be 65-plus. If all of these units are to be low income for elderly people, or if the additional 20 so-odd units would be lumped into this, what would those requirements look like? And then I think to factor in the fact that, generally speaking, most people have two cars, they have a kid, probably going to be three cars. That's an additional 60 cars on the road, not including the elderly people. So, just a couple, a couple statistics. So, according to a 2010 census, the population of Fairfax of 65-plus is 12.77%. That counts to 950. If there are 54 residents living in this facility, that will only be serving .007% of the total population of Fairfax. If in fact, these are, these facilities are going to be two-people houses, that's going to be 108 at .05% of the population. And just to do a quick quote from, this was found on, regarding traffic safety from the Fairfax Police Department, a direct quote from Chief Moran, I believe that's pronunciation. "Fairfax's population has grown, and now the town has families, has more families overall, as well as more cars per family, and a larger population riding bicycles in the town," commented Chief Chris Moran. "Fairfax was not originally designed according to a master plan," he added, "which makes it more common for us to discover new road hazards, clearance problems, or parking issues than it would be in a town that had been originally designed with such use in mind." And given that fact that it isn't on, it wasn't designed according to a master plan, how will that be impacting? So, those are just a couple of things to think about. And then also, I think the fact that it could be a potential safety hazard, given the fact that it's located so close to White Hill School, if elderly, if elderly people are driving, assuming that they aren't, that they don't have any issues driving, then that's good. But I think it could be a potential issue for children attempting to go to and from school, and that's also so close to Manor. So, just a couple of things to think about.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other public comment? Did you and Larry figure that all out back there? So, coming back up here, oh, Wendy.
I wasn't going to say anything, but just really quickly, I don't, I don't really get some of the comments that were just made, because we're talking about seniors, and most of them are probably not going to be driving very much. And as far as I understood, it was studio and one-bedroom units. And I don't, I'd be surprised if it was a big traffic impact, honestly. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, and that is part of what will be studied. Let's come back up here. John?
Yeah, thanks Mayor. Yeah, I think it's all very interesting conversation. And in regards to the studying of the length of Drake, I mean, I think the reason why traffic engineers study intersections is because that's where it gets worse, and those are the choke points, and that's where everybody's going by. And, you know, the general strip, yeah, it's going to reflect whatever's happening at those intersections. And so, that's why that's there. I mean, we've heard a little bit from the applicant, and I mean, basically, we're talking about a what-if situation with the additional unit possibilities there. And obviously, it's a complicated matrix of decisions for them. But if the cost of this study, if it's really just plugging in different numbers, once, you know, looking at all the turning movements and finding out what the existing things are there, I believe it would probably be fairly inexpensive to model the additional numbers. So, that makes sense to me, to figure that out, because it would mean not having to go out for an additional traffic study.
It's an interesting question. What if the project, the only way that this thing, if I understand from the applicant, is that if the funding doesn't come through, then they would go out for new ideas. At that point, the project might become so different that the traffic methodology might have to be substantially revised. And so, even if we added on, well, 20 more units and made it, you know, that the entire methodology at that point of some new project might require the full new methodology. So-
Well, I'd rather leave that to our traffic engineer, if it's just a matter of plugging in different numbers.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is that, right, but in 2017 or 18, might be a new, a totally new idea. But you're raising a good point. If we can go back to Prezi and say, you know, model it out for 20 additional, is that going to be such a major addition for him, and the cost so substantial, that he looks at us with even more crazy eyes than he usually does when he actually shows up to the meetings and here's what we're all about. So, you're, I would like to know, Jim, or Garrett, what do you guys think?
So, I'm not an expert at the traffic studies. But in the past, when I've paid for them, you have some different scenarios. You have RCD, their units, 54 units. And yes, punching in numbers, but he does have to do the noodling to separate it out, because their project is 54. So, there could be some additional costs which the town can pick up, although I don't think they'd be a lot. But more importantly, I think what we'd like to get for direction and methodology, if I may, is, we've heard many of the questions' comments, and we like to really leave it up to the traffic engineer to decide what's most appropriate. And we'll talk to the traffic engineer about what's appropriate. We'll also talk to him about the costs to add 20 units, what that would take in his time, figure out if he could break it out, so that would be on our dime and not RCDs, and not slow up the process, and then we could move forward. So, that would be our recommendation of how to proceed if, with the council.
As usual, excellent.
So, we're deciding on a methodology, and I'm, my understanding is, the methodology would be applied to however many units come forward with the project. Or would we need to stipulate at this point to consider running for the methodology to assume that there would be more units? Or are we just setting the methodology that then would be applied to however many units there are?
Jim, what can I answer this? It's just easier. But we're analyzing 54 units. What we would do is, we'd have a little supplemental report that would analyze, what would it be if you added 20 units? Something along those lines. So, we're analyzing the 54 per the project, which is 54, two acres, no other development except maybe the two lots. And then, we would be adding a caveat of, what if you had 20 more units, not knowing exactly where they would be, what would be that rough impact to whatever intersections and analysis we're doing, which is peak, peak hours and average daily trips. I think I just need to point out, peak hours is usually the commute hours during the morning and afternoon. Most likely, a senior project would, I would assume, have a minimal impact during peak hours.
So, are we, I'm sorry.
Do we need to add that to the methodology?
No, no.
Or would it just, if they decided that they wanted to come forward with 20 more units, at that point, the methodology would encompass that? Okay, we're going to look at 70 units, or 75 units, but run the methodology that we approved tonight?
Right, that's correct. Now, a caveat is, you never know if they can't get their, I assume it's tax credit financing and have to renegotiate a whole deal. If it comes back, maybe that even changes every analysis, and we might have to come back with another traffic impact fee requirement, or traffic impact permit requirement.
We're not talking about parking, correct?
No, there's no parking. We're just analyzing the traffic. And so, really, as Jim stated, that all we're doing, the methodology analysis, the 54 units as described, and we'll ask him different questions related to the feedback we received from the council to check into that. The study needs to be expanded to different intersections. And we'll ask him if he can do some additional modeling, adding 20 units, and what that impact would be. And that would be in a different report, be like a supplemental addendum. We're not sure what it would look like. But something along those lines, so it would be a separate thing ultimately.
So, I just had a few more questions. And for Jim, how much more is it to do intersection analyses, say, going further down and including, you know, Oak Manor, doing it more comprehensively, say, to, you know, Butterfield Drive? I mean, does that just expand the cost dramatically to look at this? Or, that's what I'm trying to get some sense of.
I couldn't give you, I couldn't give you a learned answer to that.
Because it seems like, you know, our purpose tonight in discussing methodologies is making sure that we have something that, you know, would, the scope of what we're looking at is appropriate, not necessarily the number of units, you know, trying to anticipate more units, but just anticipating an appropriate scope. And I'm curious, for example-
Excuse me, that scope is based on 54 units.
Right. And, for example, do you remember how many intersections, level of service analyses there were for the Good Earth project?
I don't, but I, Mr. Prezi recommended that methodology. And then, the applicant had their traffic engineer perform the study, and then Mr. Prezi did the peer review on it. I don't off the top of my head.
And then, the other thing is, one of the things I'm thinking is, or would they do this automatically? Would they consider studying whether or not to put in an additional traffic light at that intersection to deal with the potential traffic impacts?
What would happen is, they would identify the decrease in the level of service where and if it occurred. And if the decrease in the level of service got to a certain critical level, then he would be making recommendations for traffic light. And that did happen with the Good Earth application. And the way it was couched was that, at some point in the future, when the cumulative traffic gets to a certain point, where Center and Pastore, or Center Broadway and Pacheco got to a failing level, then a traffic light would be called for, and the Good Earth would have to pay its fair share of the cost, based on which percentage of that traffic impact came from their store.
And, but that would happen as a result of, if the study warrants it. So, we don't need to stipulate, also look at-
Correct.
Okay, so, the other thing is, a couple of things that we may want to consider, just listening to this discussion, I don't know if there would be value in comparing traffic impacts with the project compared to the historical uses when the school and church were fully active. I'm just kind of putting it out there for consideration. Would that be a value? Would that be a value enough? Would that increase the cost?
Can I interject that it would be a very difficult thing to do, because of the change in the number of members of the church and a very fluctuating number of students enrolled at Cascade Canyon over time?
No, but I mean, if we assumed, okay, at its peak, you know, when there was peak school attendance, because the church is only, you know, mostly gets used once a week. Is there any value in that? Because you yourself had said that, you know, the good news is that, you know, compared to what was there before, it may not be that big of an impact. So, I'm just offering that. Is that something we should consider when we're, or have our traffic engineer consider when looking at the overall impacts? Because it's all about, you know, before and after, and how much more we're going to be increasing traffic.
Well, if I understand correctly, you would like to ascertain what the traffic level had been at the time the school ceased to function. And that way, you get to see how much went away, as you're looking at how much impact is coming.
Well, how much additional impact are we getting versus when the school was active? And the-
Well, the good news is, I think, again, Mr. Prezi did not only the general plan in 2012 with the then-housing element, he did the subsequent addendum for the general plan update. So, when the school, or at least in the middle update, the school was functioning. So, I believe that data on the school's trips, the trip analysis on the school exists. If you wanted to just have that footnoted, what the school used to be, I think that would be easy to add to the study.
Okay. And how long ago did the school close down? Forgive me.
I think slightly over a year.
And is that, that's not too ancient history to be considered?
What the, if the school had been functioning within a year, then it would, the category in the traffic impacts permit section would have still been triggered by 5,000 square feet. It's over 5,000 square feet. But the cumulative addition would have been less than what it, I'm getting confused myself now.
So, maybe to help Jim out, the best way to describe this is, this methodology is based on current conditions, which is 54 units, no school, no church. Previously modeled with 40 units, a school and a church. So, you're always going off your baseline for what that additional impact is. Jim is correct, we modeled the old thing, numbers, so you would see what the number is. But the reality for the traffic study, sorry, echoing, the reality for the traffic study is, it's analyzing what this project does. It's going to assume no church nor school. It doesn't think about what it was before. It's what's the impact of peak hour trips ADA right now with this project. But it's historical, I'm sure it's not that big of a deal, just to add a footnote about what the other study did and said impacts were.
Okay. And then one other, I don't know if this, again, I'm just putting it out there. Do we want to consider, have the engineer consider if there's any difference in trips generated per resident, considering the demographics of, you know, older residents? I mean, in other words, are, do retired people, do they drive more? Do they drive less? Is that something we want to consider? Or will they do that automatically?
Oh, yeah, no, that's definitely an assumption, yes.
Okay, so we don't need to stipulate that in terms of the methodologies?
No.
Okay.
Okay. John?
Great.
Wow.
This one's loud. Okay. When, clarifying question is, you know, I remember earlier in the plans, there was contemplated the way for RCD to make this financially work, there was contemplation of putting additional properties, more high-end houses, or selling off lots behind this at one point?
Two.
Two, okay. Now, I mean, because I know that high-end housing generates a whole lot more trips. I'm correct in that this traffic analysis does not take those into account at all?
That was a good question.
Actually, I believe it would, because the proper, one of the applications is for the subdivision, as stipulated in the housing element of the general plan. The two acres being carved out in the front, in the already disturbed area, the back residual 18 units have an inherent entitlement of 18, 18, what did I say?
Eighty.
Sorry, eight, forgive me. 18 acres, thank you. 18 acres would remain, the front two, the general plan housing element calls for the front two acres to be rezoned to planned development district. The residual, the leftover 18 acres behind would maintain its current zoning of Upland Residential 7, which means you need seven acres for a house. So, seven into 18 goes twice. So, part of their application that's been submitted is for subdivision of the two acres in front where the project site would- in front where the project site would be. And the back 18 acres would be split in half, so that it would be easily transferred to two independent parties that then could put one house and conceivably a second unit with that house. Having said that, the applicant, RCD, is actually offering up the entire 18 acres to the town if it so desires to purchase the back 18 acres at a price of $300,000. And presented that to the open space committee in this room last Tuesday night, also with a member of the Marin Open Space Trust in presence, who is interested also in assisting with the securing of that 18 acres for open space, if at all possible. So I believe that the, to answer your question, yes, the potential of the two houses and the two second units would be cumulatively analyzed.
Okay. Because that would be very useful in light of the other comments made here tonight, you know, around, you know, if the numbers work out a little differently for RCD, you know, modeling, you know, a different number of units there, should timing and everything work out for that. I would welcome the space behind this open space. I think it could be an asset to the town. I mean, there might be, you know, who knows? I mean, in your wildest dreams, you'd want some sort of recreational facility. But, but I know that high-end housing generates a phenomenally higher amount of car trips, which is one of the reasons why our roads are so crowded today is, you know, in the past, you'd have, you know, four trips a day or something like that. I bet you in Bennett House, it's probably more like two trips a day per unit tops. Whereas a high-end house, you know, it's one of these larger, you know, things that people are complaining about, they have like 16, 18 trips, you know, all the different delivery trucks and people, you know, cleaning people and garden people and all this stuff that tends to come into play. So if you're talking about crowding up our roads, man, this thing is feedbacky.
Oh, feedbacky.
You know, it's a pretty good way to provide affordable housing and also reduce the crowding on our roads per person. So, you know, that's, I'm glad that that's there and I'm to have those additional, oh, I see what's going on.
Oh, no.
The big reveal.
You can see David Socks on television.
The acting Public Works Director is in motion.
Yeah. All right. So anyway, I'm glad to hear that that's also being modeled, and I think it would be useful, since that's being modeled also, to have low-income housing as opposed to this high-end housing that is also being modeled.
Unless, you have questions?
So I would like to know actually who pays for the study if we do a request to study for a larger number of units as a supplement.
I think I heard the town manager say we would absorb that cost, and it would be a parallel process to the actual application at hand.
I had another question too.
Just one second, I think David had something.
No, no. So there was some discussion of the project possibly supplying some kind of shuttle service for the residents. Is that within, is that still being contemplated? I don't know where that...
I think these are all thing, oh, hi.
Sure.
Yes, please. You're here, we should take full advantage.
Yes, actually, we just had a conversation yesterday with Whistle Stop Services to explore that. And we're, we're going to be reaching out to Marin Transit as well to look for other ways of helping our residents shift from car usage to shared transportation.
While you're here.
So I think in light of that, I think it might be useful to include in the study the impacts if such a program is implemented and how that might be a traffic mitigation. Because that'll be different than if, you know, you just build the housing and there's no shuttle kind of service. And that's not in Mr. Perizy's proposed letter.
Maybe as clarification, typically with traffic studies, you're not, that could be a mitigation measure if that's acceptable. But you wouldn't study what the impact would be to traffic because if that shuttle went away, you need to know what your traffic impact is on service levels, not in the best-case scenario. That's a viable mitigation measure, but typically those things are expensive, and if they stop funding it, then you're kind of out of, that mitigation measure goes away. So I, it wouldn't be studied in here, but it could possibly be a mitigation measure, and obviously it would be a great thing for the project just in general.
Yeah. I guess if it's appropriate for me to share one other thing, is that we're not particularly nervous about the outcome of this traffic study. 54 apartments doesn't really move the dial on traffic too much. I mean, it is for, yeah, so in our experience, that has not been problematic, that has not been an impediment to moving forward with creating new affordable housing. So I'm not nervous about the outcome. And we definitely are, I mean, the funding source we're competing for next year is this state cap and trade funding, which the main goal of it is to mode shift folks out of vehicles. And so we're, we're open to any other creative ideas. That is part of our goal, is to help our residents live a car-free or car-light existence.
So if you could answer this question, and again, from your vast experience, picking up on Larry's point. If you move from 54 to, let's just say 74, because the project fails to get the funding and you have to go back, would you want the traffic study to include a 54 and a 74? Or would you say, no, do the 54 now, and if we come back because it fails and we decide that 74 is a good idea, we'll have to do a different traffic study? It'll be so different that you'd really be spinning your wheels now.
Well, I appreciated the offer for the town to pick up the supplemental cost of the going above. I think that, that is very appealing. I think that I'm really hoping that we will be successful in our funding application next year, and it will be 54 units. And so studying a higher number while it's interesting and, you know, maybe handy in, if the bad-case scenario comes in, you know, it's in our back pocket. But the cost of doing additional, a revised study next year, we're going to have to be doing a total redesign if we do, you know, if we have that, if we're able to get the time to make a larger project that...
And I just wanted to add that there is one unintended, I think, positive consequence of densifying, and that is that only with a certain amount of density do you justify another bus being added to an already existing line, which actually services everyone down the line and up the line. So that is something that needs to be considered, it's just a little bit of an aside. But before we continue, I have a major concern about this conversation. And that is that it came up as a good-hearted and a very, a brilliant idea. But what I can hear and see in the social media tomorrow is very scary. And it means that the council decided that we're going to study for 75 units, and they've postponed the traffic methodology because the project might change. And believe me, we have been, it's very hard to communicate back to a computer monitor and try to explain something that we are all grappling with for hours here tonight. If anyone's listening out there, I would, I think we are amping up something that has already caused more confusion than we would all like to spend our time untangling right now. So I would like to hear what it is that we are thinking as a council, we're going to do with that. And, and also hear from the public if you have any ideas, because there's nothing like that to kill a good idea.
Well, let's just go with what we've got. I raised the question, and I think you answered it quite effectively, that if the project had to go forward, that you would come back with us, if I understand correctly, you would be, we would be talking about a supplemental traffic study. So we don't have to do it now. I like the idea of the larger unit, and I think Larry's idea is a good one, is you, you know, you're clustering tighter and all the reasons that he articulated. But that, I think, shares its, or raises concerns. So this is what we have in front of us today, and I would make the motion, resolution, next in line, a resolution of the Town Council, the Town of Fairfax, establishing the methodology for preparing a traffic impact study for a 54-unit senior housing project, Victory Village, located at 2626 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, Town of Fairfax, California.
I'd offer a friendly amendment, that the intersection study also include the intersections between Klaus Drive and the project. So we pick up Oak Manor and any other intersections that would be studied.
So if we have a friendly amendment, and I want to make another friendly amendment, how, what's the process here?
It's up to David to accept it.
Okay.
I accept Peter's friendly amendment. Renee?
And I, I don't know how we add this into this motion, but I really do think that it's worth going, having the conversation with Alicia to find out if it is, if it helps them that we would study now that additional potential for 20 more units.
Did you just argue against that 30 seconds ago?
No, I, that was not an argument as much as a, as a request to figure out how we're going to deal with this. Because I think it's a good idea, that shouldn't be scrapped by the fear of this.
But it's a good idea...
But it's, is it worth just saying, no, we're not going to do anything right now?
No, because as she pointed out, it's not going to happen, I don't want to put words in your mouth, what I heard, was that it's not going to happen unless the funding is unavailing, and then we can come back and we can reimagine the project.
Was that your end of story on that? So it's only in a worst-case scenario that, that it would be studied for additional units? If the funding does not come through, it doesn't pencil out as it is?
Yeah, the plan would change.
Okay. So it sounds to me like we are at a time now to look at approving the methodology with 54, with Peter's friendly amendment. Is that correct?
You bet.
Okay. So is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor? That's all of us, aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. We missed you. You look so spry.
[inaudible]
All right. So moving along, we are on item, agenda item 12, which is the regular agenda. And that item is to discuss and consider the response to Marin Civil Grand Jury Report, Law Enforcement Citizen Complaint Procedures. The grand jury has a few complaints. Chief Marin.
I'm ready. I can go through all three of these items, 12, 13, 14, rather quickly, depending on any questions. I'm sure you've read the reports, you know, they're very lengthy, so I won't go through all of it because it would take up all the time that we don't have. So the Town Council is required to respond in writing to the findings and recommendations contained in the Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report. This one being Law Enforcement Citizen Complaint Procedures, the grand jury has a few complaints. And again, you'll have to respond for each three, so I won't repeat that again on the next two. So in this grand jury report, the grand jury, over the years, well, first of all, over the years, there's been some, a bunch of changes in the laws regarding how citizen complaints should be handled and what requirements should or should not be on forms for complaints. The grand jury investigation found discrepancies in the ways various law enforcement agencies in Marin handled complaints. This raised concerns that people might be intimidated into not filing complaints in general, or being dissuaded from doing it. The Fairfax Police Department has had a proper complaint procedure in place for many years. It is constantly reviewed for legality, and we constantly make changes to it. Some of the recommendations in the grant, well, first of all, we agreed, my recommendation is that we agree with all of their findings, F1 through seven or eight, or whatever it was. On the recommendations, there's one that I am recommending we not implement due to impracticality, and that's a recommendation that they wanted an online reporting system for people to make complaints. And the reason I feel that's unwarranted is, number one, we don't have such a system in place, many, most agencies don't. Some agencies have online, online reporting for crimes, we don't have that, it's an expense. Most of the times, cities or police departments have those to make it easy for people to file crime reports. In this case, it would be for a citizen complaint, because they don't want to take the time and they don't have the staff to go to calls. We have the staff, we have the time, we, you call, we come see you. So we don't have that mechanism, mechanism in place. So I'm recommending that due to impracticality, we disagree with that recommendation. The other recommendations, most of them, we actually had in place, but I fine-tuned, I took the recommendations, which are very, they did a very thorough job on this, and I took, I fine-tuned some of the things that we were already doing, such as, in the recommendations are through 11 or 13. I updated the website to have the actual procedure. The complaint form wasn't on there, but the detail of how to file a complaint was. We're not required to have it on the website, but I agreed with that recommendation, and I've since added that to the website. Not only the policy, but the procedure that we have to follow to accept and/or investigate a complaint. The location of the forms themselves should be at the lobby or counter of the police department. They were there, but they just keep getting intermingled with other things in that rack in the office. So I've cleaned up the rack and labeled where they are, and I'm making more of an effort to have staff monitor. So if they're gone, because they're, get taken, or they get covered with other things, that they're visible for someone who just wants to get a form and not talk to anybody. Another recommendation that I agree with is training. Training is always ongoing with staff on how we accept, investigate complaints, and never dissuade someone from making a complaint. Made, agreed with recommendations and made changes to the forms, such as indicating that a signature on the form is optional, technicality on that. There's a federal law that doesn't, that, federal law says you, it has to be optional to sign it, but California law doesn't say it. But I'm fine with putting optional on the form. If someone doesn't want to sign it, it's the same as making anonymous complaint. We do take anonymous complaints, so there's no reason to require a signature. Another recommend, two recommendations, or one recommendation that I recommended that we couldn't fix now, was they wanted a, the ability, or explained in the procedure of the complaint, how to appeal it. So if they weren't satisfied with the outcome of our investigation, how to appeal it. Town code already has something in, we already have something in the town code that people can appeal, in this case, our investigation can be appealed to Town Council. There's a code in town, in the code about that. So within the next 90 days, is what I put in the recommendation, I'll update my policy and the procedure on complaints to indicate that that's where the next avenue would be, because it's already in place for the town. One final thing, that originally, you have a supplement in your packet, supplement to agenda item 12. Originally, I was, I disagreed with the recommendations, not a requirement, to have the forms and the procedures in Spanish, because we don't have a high percentage of population like Santa Fel May or Nevada May. But after some productive conversation with Councilmember Kohler, I've changed that recommendation, and I'm going to translate the forms and the procedures into Spanish, and we'll have those available on the website as well as at the front counter. So based on that, that's a quick overview of agreeing with the findings and then the recommendations that, as I explained it. And that would conclude that staff report for citizen complaints.
Okay. Any questions about that one?
Yes.
Okay, Peter.
Thank you, Chief. And I'm glad that you had that discussion with Barbara about making the form available in Spanish. That was one of the things that I thought we should do, because even though we don't have a large Latino population in Fairfax, a lot of people come, come through and may, someone may have a complaint, that, so I'm glad we're making that available in Spanish. And the other thing is, I would also just suggest that we make our forms available... And the other thing is, I would also just suggest that we make our forms available to download as a PDF online, that's a major convenience for people.
That's on the website now.
Oh, the form is downloadable as a PDF.
Absolutely, the form and the procedure, it's a PDF, yes.
Okay, very good. That, okay, good to hear, those are my only comments.
All good. Barbara?
I just want to thank the chief for listening, and we had a good discussion, so thank you for making that change.
Thank you, thank you for contacting me.
And I think it'll be helpful, appreciate it.
Well, I would like to thank you both also, because I had that down on my notes, something to bring up, and I'm glad we're all on the same page.
Well, I want to thank you all for thanking each other, and, so let's move on to the next grand jury report. Public comment, I'm so sorry. Any comments from the public? There are two people waiting here, very patiently. Okay, but we're carrying on to the next grand jury item.
The next grand jury report.
Don't we have to make a motion?
Yeah, you do.
I'd like to make a motion to, to approve the attached response with the supplemental change.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Okay, motion Kohler, second read, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right. Item, item, next item, chief.
I got it.
I'm lost, okay. Good, item number 13.
Okay, the next grand jury report is the Marin's Hidden Human Sex Trafficking Challenge, it's happening in our backyard. Victims in human trafficking, sex trafficking, include children as well as adults from all walks of life. Use of drugs, violence, and psychological trauma by pimps often prevents victims from trying to escape. It's up to the first responders and healthcare professionals to recognize these victims when they are encountered, in the various forms that we encounter them in our job as law enforcement officials, and try to help them get their lives back on track. The grand jury, in their report, again, another very well-investigated written report, recommends and would like a higher level of first responder training within the county. State law already requires that all law enforcement officers have two hours of training on human trafficking. Fairfax is in compliance with that. It is not clear, this is from the report, their report, it's their, or their opinion, that it's not clear that all officers in the county are receiving consistent training, and that's based on each agency in the county and their interviews with their police chiefs. But again, we are in compliance. Having said that, the grand jury advocates the standardized and mandated training for all first responders, and believes that there should be appropriate training for teachers, parents, students as well. So in the grand jury's request for a response from the Town of Fairfax, we agreed, I'm recommending that we agree with findings F1 through F13, based upon the information contained in the grand jury report, and in the recommendations that they wanted us to respond to, was having Fairfax officers be in compliance with training, again, which we are, but they want additional and more detailed training, which we agree we will do, if and when it's implemented through various forms within the county. So having said that, we're in compliance with state, we agree with the recommendation that we will give more detailed training if and when it becomes available. And that would conclude that staff report.
Okay, excellent. Any questions for the chief? All right, then I will enter, oh, Peter.
What is the training that our officers received? Is it, is it in-person, or is it computer model?
It's both. We do, we have DVD training, post-police officer standards and training, that certifies us as police officers. We have DVD training for that, as well, and again, we have to do this every two years. So sometimes we may re-watch the DVD, but the officers are also required to go to what we call continued professional training, every two years, and in that in-person class, they also will get this.
Okay, and do you?
So if they were to miss that class, for whatever reason, or miss that portion, we have the DVD that will pick up that mandated training.
And do you support in concept the creation of a, like a joint task force on human sex trafficking?
Yeah, that's been discussed, and Santa Fel has actually taken a lead on that over the past several years, and we send officers and participate in operations that try to identify and rescue and help these victims. So we do participate in the actual operations.
And I'm wondering if we have any, if you have any policies or protocols, if, I mean, I'm not aware of, like, a lot of prostitution happening in Fairfax, I'm sure it's happening somewhere, but if you do get a situation where, you know, a young woman is, you know, say there's probable cause, that she's, you know, exchanging money for sex, do we have a policy to treat that as a crime and arrest the woman as a prostitute, or do we have a protocol more to treat that woman as a sex trafficking victim, and then, you know, deal with it in the ways that the report is recommending?
It can go both ways, depending on the circumstance of the, of why we're dealing with that situation, but we are, we do understand and we are trained that they are victims. So if, if, if the case means, they certainly could be arrested, but we don't take the approach that they're a suspect in that crime, we take the approach that they are a victim, and we investigate it appropriately to determine the correct, the best course of action. It may involve an arrest, it may not, because again, in the old days, they were just suspects, now we treat them as victims.
And I've read some interesting things, saying that to kind of really take the victimization, or reduce the victimization of women that fall into that life experience, to put the emphasis more on arresting the men that are purchasing the sex.
That's often the case, yes.
Do you, do we have any policy on that, or any thoughts on that?
Not a, not a specific policy, we just have procedures, the training, then when we encounter the, when we encounter it, we have pamphlets and information, and we try to get them help if they're willing to accept it.
Okay, and then one other, just a comment, with respect to the, you know, we have two members on the Ross Valley Fire Board, and I'm an alternate, have we, I think it would be worth looking into, and maybe Garrett, what training RVSD first responders have with respect to, you know, recognizing sex trafficking as a, as an issue. Do we have any kind of training like that for our firemen and first responders?
Actually, I'd have to get back to you on that, although I do know the fire department, if they're required to respond.
You'll be responding to that too?
They actually, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so can I entertain a motion, please? I do apologize, it's getting late. Wendy. Push that, she knows.
I just, I just, I partly stayed because I was interested in hearing you talk about this topic, because it's something I really care about deeply, and I just wanted to appreciate that it's even coming up at all. And I'm curious, I know that, first of all, there's an amazing documentary called Sold, that a Mill Valley resident is, was partially part of, and it's an amazing film, I, documentary I really recommend. And it's not necessarily so out in the public, like regular prostitution is, it's, you know, I know there's a restaurant in Berkeley that's been very well-known to be part of sex trafficking, young, young people from India, and I know it's, I know it's in our communities in ways that we don't see, and I'm curious if there is anything in Marin that we don't know about, that you know about. But I, I just, it's an issue that's, that's really important, and I just appreciate that it's coming up at all.
Okay, thank you. I can't go into any detail, but it's, it's going on all around us, and there is actually a case that we investigated a while back in Fairfax, that's reared up again, that I can't discuss right now, where a pimp, so to speak, has been stalking one of our residents and, on this very topic. So it's happening anywhere and everywhere, it's happening here.
And, you know, it's, it's people coming in from other countries, I mean, we're, like, the whole immigration issue is such a big topic in the election, but it's, it's a huge issue, in ways that people are getting really stolen from their families, and brought over here, and completely abused, and I, I would imagine there's kids in our schools that we, we don't even realize.
Thank you, Wendy. Thank you, chief. Okay, so we're back up here, can I entertain a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the attached response for the grand jury report, Marin Hidden Human Sex Trafficking Challenge, it's happening in our backyard.
Second.
Okay, so motion Kohler, second read, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. So.
[inaudible]
All right, so next, next item is the, wait, don't we have three of these? Yes, number 14 on the agenda, which is to discuss and consider the response to the Marin Civil Grand Jury Report, the 911 First Responder Referral Program More Than a Band-Aid for Seniors. Chief.
Okay, this one should be very quick. This report from the grand jury looks at Resource Referral Program for Senior Citizens that was developed by the Santa Fel Fire Department. Many seniors need assistance beyond what first responders can provide during a 911 call. With seniors consent, with seniors consent, people can be linked up with the Marin County Aging and Adult Services Information and Assistance Program. Even if a senior does not wish a referral at the time of the contact, the information can be provided to them and/or their caregivers about the available services when they are ready. Because of the success of the Santa Fel program, the Marin County Civil Grand Jury believes it should be implemented by all first responders in the county, and that we attend training on that program developed by Santa Fel Fire Department. We were asked to respond to recommendation R3 regarding said training, and I'm recommending yes, we would more, we will attend any training in the future, when the training is offered and available to us by the Santa Fel Fire Department. And that is being discussed and worked on, trying to get that done. Having said all that, we, the training is good, it's a good program, I've spoken with Chief Bishop from Santa Fel regarding it, and her officers have already gone through it, so we're just trying to find a way now, after the grand jury looked into it, to get the rest of us in the county to go through that training. We do pay attention when we go to these 911 calls with seniors, whatever the issue may be, adult abuse, financial abuse, neglect, or nobody to take care of them, and we do have referrals, and it's not like we're blind to helping them, but this is a good program that Santa Fel put together, and it will just enhance what we already do when we go to these calls. So that would conclude this staff report.
Okay, thank you, chief. Any questions? Going out to the public, any comments? Wendy, and please, I just have to remind you that you need to speak to us.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I'm.
Because otherwise, we don't feel important.
I, I made a mistake in my last comment, I think it, the film is called Sold, not Stolen, I think, but I'm, I'm just curious also, as far as 911 calls with seniors, if, I know there's issues around cert forms and DNR, DNRs that aren't always seen by first responders, and just curious how that fits into this.
I don't know how it would fit into this training, because I haven't attended that training.
Okay, so we'll report back once there is a training, and our, our police go through it. Thanks, Wendy. Okay, so does anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion?
Oh, good.
Oh, sorry, to approve the attached response to the Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report, 9/11 First Responder Referral Program More Than a Band-Aid for Seniors.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion Lax, and second, Winesoff, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Chief, thank you so much. I'm glad to see that these grand jury reports are useful, and that we already do most of these things, and that when we don't, we add more and more useful things to the community. Thanks for leading it.
We always can improve everything we do.
Yeah, thank you.
We got to keep our ears open and eyes open to it, though.
That's right. Okay, thank. Next item, so we say that at 10 o'clock, we'll review the agenda, so we have, we have four items, and we have not done council reports, or.
Three items plus council reports.
I'm sorry, three items, council reports, and manager's report.
I would suggest that we finish it up, including all the items, it's only 10 o'clock, and I'm feeling very fresh.
What did you do during that break? Okay.
I don't know, one thing that might be, we might put the more time-consuming item at the end of the agenda, I don't know if we want to do that, or we can't.
What I want to do is find out what these people are waiting patiently for.
Item 16.
Item 16, okay, well, that was.
Oh, okay, so let, could we go ahead and?
But I would suggest that since the chief is also going to speak a little bit to the.
Oh, the social host.
I think we should do item 15, and then move on to 16.
Let's go ahead and do that, because 16 is going to be more of a discussion, I imagine. Okay, so moving on to item 15, which is the second reading by title only, An Adoption of an Ordinance Amending Fairfax Town Code, Chapter 9.28, which is Social Host Accountability to Add Controlled Substances, and get a staff report from Garrett.
Sure, really briefly, your social host ordinance is an ordinance that makes parties responsible for, if there's gatherings, it's unruly, it's loud, for underage youths for drinking. In July, you actually amended that to include controlled substances, so this is your second reading. If you adopt it tonight, then it would take effect 30 days from tonight, but the chief was asked if he can maybe do a brief present, not a presentation, but a brief update on how he handles violations by underage youth that would fall under this ordinance.
Okay.
Chief.
Yes, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I did watch it afterwards, and I will compliment and thank Councilmember Lax for bringing the discussion, in my opinion, kind of back on track, when it was suggested that we add into the ordinance itself, a restorative justice component to deal with the violation. And Councilmember Lax, I think, was right on point, when he described that they're two different paths, and I agree with that completely, we have the civil violation of the social host, and then you have the, so to speak, the criminal violation of whether they're in possession of controlled substance, or possession of alcohol. They're two different tracks, and to put the, the, the manner in which we enforce a civil violation for a criminal, and kind of intermingle it with this civil ordinance, I don't think was, would be appropriate, and I wouldn't recommend that. I think where we're at with it, and what's being recommended in this, in the second reading, is appropriate. Having said that, we take, at least I do, and my officers do, we take these matters very seriously. So if we go to a, a home, and there's a social host violation, and we can prove that based on our ordinance, we go that route. In addition to that, if there's any type of crime, and now the drugs will be included, of possession of alcohol, or any alcohol-related or other crime, we don't ignore that one for the other. They get both. If we get a social host violation out of it, they're getting that ticket, the civil ticket. The criminal aspect is going to take its other path, again, as Councilmember Lax brought up. So, having said that, keeping that component out of the ordinance, I think, is very appropriate. When we do have a criminal violation, we employ, in here in Fairfax Police, we employ three options in how we deal with that violation. There are no warnings, even though we have discretion, nothing's black and white, we deal with everything for letter of the law, I mean, spirit of the law versus letter of the law, how do you like that, David? Did that backwards. But with, with, with the seriousness of the abuse involved with these juveniles, we take these matters very seriously. So there's really no warnings, like in the old days, where you catch the kids with beer, or they're drinking out somewhere, and you have them pour it out, and you send them home, and the parent, and the parents don't even call, nobody knows nothing. Those days are long gone. So if we have a violation of the law, they're going to get a citation, and how we dispose of that is going to be, it was two ways, but now I have a third option. One is, they get the ticket, and it goes to, it's evaluated in-house, and it's, and it's either sent to the district attorney, juvenile probation department, which is a component of the district attorney's office, for prosecution. We never see it again, it's gone. It just goes, they're in the system, and the, and the juvenile probation division disposes of it in the manner in which they do, whether it gets prosecuted, or, or gets referred to youth court, which is what the county probation uses. That's number one way. Number two way is, we keep it in-house, and by in-house, we use, use the Youth Services Bureau, which we're partnered with, with Santa Fel Police Department, and we have been for a number of years.
What the Youth Services is?
It's a, it's a component of the Santa Fel Police Department, where they, to keep the children out of the criminal justice system, but still get them counseling, resources, support, bring the parents involved, and. uh, support, uh, bring the parents involved, uh, in therapy, whatever it is, there's a whole litany of, of, of ways that they help this child, keeping them out of the system, but getting them help and, and making them responsible for the actions. It also can include, uh, include community service work. It's generic overview of Youth Services. So, what we do in-house, and Sergeant Rico Tabaranz is in charge of the program, is he'll evaluate the child, the juvenile, and determine, you know, what type of history they have, have they cooperated in the past, do they have a criminal record, are they already on probation? And he'll determine whether it's gonna stay in-house, Youth Services, or whether it's gonna be just directly sent to juvenile probation. I recently met with Don Carney, uh, the youth court coordinator, uh, person. He has a very good program, and, which is, again, what the county uses when the, when the citation goes to them. They'll refer it to youth court and try to work it that way. If the child doesn't cooperate or complete the youth court process, it comes back to the, the juvenile probation division. So, after meeting with Don Carney and discussing this, I learned that, uh, even though when I send a citation, I hope I'm not confusing you, when I send a citation to juvenile probation, I know it's going to youth court, but the child's actually getting in the system before it gets to youth court. I learned from Don Carney that I can bypass juvenile probation and make a direct referral to his program, similar to how I do with Santa Fe program. If the youth does not finish the program at Santa Fe or youth court, the case is sent back to me. And then we repackage it and send it to, in this case, juvenile probation. Now, juvenile probation may send it right back to youth court anyway, but it's like, it's, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna end a cycle of, they're either gonna cooperate and stay out of the system, or they're gonna get in the system. So, long-winded way to say, we take these matters seriously. Uh, we have two paths, uh, the, the civil, social host violation, and any crime we can establish, and then I, I, I have three options of how to dispose of that case with that, with that child. One last thing I'll add, and, and take any questions you have, is when, when the original report was written, uh, I think we discussed, we hadn't, or Garrett in the report, well, let me rephrase that. We had one case after we started this discussion. We just had another one on, uh, July 24th, uh, where we cited a child. We didn't have enough for any, we didn't have enough for any criminal violation, but we established a social host violation, and they received a citation for that. Those would be my comments, and I'll take any questions you have.
So, Chief, first of all, I, I commend your approach, particularly with, with the kids. A, a wrong step should not destroy a life forever. However, I would say to any parents that are out there, part of being a parent is being an adult, and, uh, it's incumbent upon all of us who have brought a life, uh, into the world to take responsibility of it until that, uh, kid becomes fully responsible for his or her own actions. And so, I recall, uh, it wasn't more than, I think, two weeks ago, that I believe there was a social host, uh, situation. I don't know if you want to speak to that, certainly not in detail. I'm reminded where, I know, but where, where was this? Remind us where this was?
It was in the 100 block of Hillside Drive on July 24th.
Um, without, again, uh, getting into specifics, how, uh, how was the response of, of the parents, uh, in this matter?
I, initially, we couldn't reach the, well, first of all, the, the, the youth was eighteen, so an adult, but certainly not twenty-one to have a party with alcohol. Um, but there were a couple of twenty-one-year-olds at the party. So, when you're trying to figure out where did they get the alcohol, well, you have twenty-one-year-olds at the party, that's who probably brought it. But, um, we established the violation, we cited the eighteen-year-old, uh, juvenile, and we contacted the parent anyway, even though they're an adult, because it was the parent's house. So, we're gonna be tattletales. And we reported that. At the time, the parent, the father, they were on vacation somewhere, and the cellphone connection was bad. The officer and the parent got the gist of what was going on, and he knew that the child was being cited. And the follow-up with the father, uh, by the officers the next day, the father said that the juvenile had, the daughter had called him, but didn't really give quite all the details that we were now providing the next day with a, with a clear telephone connection. So, what, how serious he's taking it, or what he's gonna do, you know, as a parent, I don't know, but, uh, they've, they've received the ticket, they've received the invoice, and, uh, we'll go from there.
To belabor my understanding of how the process works, they get the ticket, they submit payment for the ticket, or however they decide, um, how it's being disposed under the process. Do we ever, um, continue on with our contact with the parent? Or, or much like a speeding ticket, you deal with it and you move on?
No, unless there's a, uh, no, unless there's some specific issue, and I can speak to. We had one house where we, we've had ten, we've cited ten times since we enacted the ordinance in two thousand and eight, seven, somewhere around there. We've had ten cases. Um, in two thousand and twelve, we had three at the same address over the course of different months. So, we did work with the parents on the problem child that was doing that. So, the answer to your question, no, not necessarily, but if we know there's an issue that we can help, because obviously the child has a problem, maybe the parent does too, because they can't parent that child, we will work on that, and we did that on that case. Uh, so, so the answer to your question, no, on this one, there's been no continued follow-up.
In difficult times. Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Um, I just wanted to comment, I wanted to thank you, because now you have been posting on Nextdoor, um, letting people know. I think it's important that parents know that this exists, and kids know it exists, because what you hear from kids is, nobody ever does anything anyway. It doesn't, you know, we've never gotten it, we won't get in trouble. I know someone who went through this, and they didn't get in trouble. So, by putting it out there, um, it's, it's definitely raising awareness. What's interesting is that we've had two, right, in the last, how much time, and only ten over the entire course of the program?
Well, we've had, we had one this year, July 24th. The, the, the last one prior to that was, uh, May 29th of fifteen. So, it's actually been a while since we had one.
So, we haven't had two. Alright, well, anyway.
Of course, that's not to say they're not occurring, it's just, you know, it's when we get them, we get them.
Well, I think it's important that parents be informed that this exists, and so, we're going a long way to making that happen. Thank you.
And also, uh, you know, just my experience knowing some young people that got into some very serious alcohol consumption, life-threatening levels of alcohol consumption at a party that the parents were hosting when the parents were there, and another incident where they knew, they sort of basically bought the liquor for the kids and just said, "Okay, we're gonna go out, you have fun." And so, um, I hope too, it's a, a deterrent, not just to the, you know, eighteen-year-old guys that are, you know, providing a party for their younger friends, but also, you know, there's been kind of a, with some parents, a, a really bad, irresponsible, you know, encouraging kids to drink. So, I hope that addresses, um, and helps mitigate, you know, the, some of that, uh, overly permissive parental, um, indulgence in drinking, which can get really out of hand, um, and, and can be quite harmful.
I agree. One, one last comment, because I think it's, it's very relevant. Uh, at the last Ross Valley Health Youth Collaborative Meeting that I attended, Renee wasn't at that one, uh, I, I ran, I don't have the report with me, but I ran a report, because I was looking at the, the offenders, the juvenile offenders of alcohol-related crimes in Fairfax over the course, I think I did over the course of eight months or something like that. And, and I brought it to the meeting, because what was interesting was, not that our, our Fairfax children are angels, Fairfax is known as a party town, but a majority, uh, I'm gonna say eighty percent, are all not Fairfax kids. So, the ones that are coming into our purview and into our, into the microscope of Fairfax Police and that we're catching, doing something wrong, a majority of them are not even our kids. They're kids from somewhere else, and they're coming in. So, I, not that, again, not that ours are angels, but...
Out of the county, or other towns?
No, other towns.
I hope everyone's hearing that at home. Not at my home. No, okay. Um, so, public comment? No, okay, so, um...
I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you, Chief, yeah. I was just gonna say that. Okay, go for it.
I'd like to waive the second reading and read by title only, "An Adoption Ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax, Amending Fairfax Town Code Chapter 9.28, Social Host Accountability to Add Controlled Substances."
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so, motion Kohler, Winesoff intercepts the second, and, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Um, alright, Chief, thank you. Good night.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, and now the moment you've all been waiting for. Uh, item number sixteen, uh, this is, uh, "To Discuss and Consider Options Regarding the Use of a Planning Facilitator and Land Use Design Firm for the Town Center Plan Workshop Number Two, Which Has Been Rescheduled Till October 1st." Who is going to do our staff report? Garrett?
Okay, so, as background, you may recall, just in July, uh, you considered a report from staff indicating that in preparation for the next workshop, which then was scheduled for August, but now is scheduled for October 1st, that, uh, we needed some outside consulting help to assist with that workshop. Workshop number two was really to be, as Jim likes to point out, really the brainstorming, creative part of the workshop, and it was gonna allow us to further explore issues and opportunities. And so, staff had indicated, original concept was, we were gonna conduct the workshop facilitated ourselves with assistance from LAK, who's a consultant we use normally for these type of projects. However, given that both staff and LAK are pretty busy processing applications currently in the town, it was decided that it'd probably be better to go outside and look for another firm, plus we thought maybe it'd re-energize the process, uh, give us some additional resources. At that meeting, the council indicated that really, uh, you'd probably like to see if we could explore using someone who's in the county, someone, firm that perhaps has more experience directly in Marin. And you also indicated that if we had a facilitator, it would be good to have, it'd be preferred to have a facilitator who was independent of the planning firm. And so, with that, in the first staff report that you received, indicated that our planning director contacted three firms. Uh, fortunately, since Friday, uh, those firms have indicated that they won't be submitting any qualifications or proposals, just because they didn't believe it was a good fit for them. But, that being said, actually, since Monday, uh, you have received now two supplemental staff reports, and attached that are additional, we call them proposals, letters of interest that we receive from firms. And so, there's really six proposals, letters of interest you have received, four from firms that are facilitators, some indicate that perhaps they could provide some planning services, and then two from strictly, uh, planning firms. One is from the, the firm, qualifications from the firm that we spoke about in July. And so, what we are recommending this evening is that we're not, that the council not select necessarily a particular proposal or firm, but we're asking you just kind of give us your perspective of which firm you think might be the best fit. Because the firms didn't really have an opportunity to respond to an actual RFP, they're really just responding to something we discussed to them over the phone, so it's really not an apples-to-apples comparison, but it should give you an idea of just what the qualifications are for the firm. And what we're looking through, our staff is getting some parameters input from the council of what's really important to you. Um, and then that would allow us to go and talk to some firms that we think best meet that criteria, and then perhaps negotiate, be able to negotiate, you know, a certain scope of work and a fee. All the firms expressed an interest, or expressed a willingness to negotiate fee and scope of work, just because we, they know we were really kind of at the last minute trying to get some information from them. And so, what we see is the options for the council is, is one, we can continue with the old process or structure where staff would conduct and facilitate the workshop, and we'd find a firm to help us prepare all the materials. Um, we don't think that's the best approach. It's the most cost-effective. We don't think it's the best approach for the workshops. Two would be returning, retaining some type of planning, uh, design firm to help prepare the materials, as well as conduct and facilitate the workshop. And then the other option is retaining a firm that would help with conducting the workshop, but retaining a separate firm that would facilitate the workshop, so you have two separate entities. Um, our goal would be, keep facilitation under $3,000, um, by further refining the possible scope on what we're looking for. And the other, other option is trying to keep the materials and conducting the workshop for under fifteen for at least this cycle. And so, again, you have six, six proposals. You have two from land, I'll call them planning design firms, which is TAC from, uh, let's see, what's on my, you have, let's see, The Grove and Hughes Collaboration, and Nelson Nygard for facilitation, TAC or Planning Design is land use, and you have...
You're kind of mushing them all together. Well, at least what I saw is the two that would do the planning, design work is TACR and WRT, is that correct?
That's correct. I was getting to that.
And the rest, well, it was just getting all mushed together. So, the rest of them are just saying that they're gonna facilitate.
Facilitation firms, some may say, they maybe could do some planning.
Facilitation as well. But, that's what I saw, is TACR and WRT, and it looks like, at least the WRT one, they're talking about facilitating as well as doing the planning design stuff. Did I read that correctly, or is that incorrect? It looks like they, they kind of would do the whole ball of wax.
Well, they have that in there, but I think they're flexible if we were to bring in a third-party facilitator.
I'm just saying, looking at, theirs is the most easy to understand, and that's why I saw that. So, I wasn't debating it, I was just saying it looked like that's what they were looking at.
Any other comments, questions, anyone? I'm catching up here.
Yeah, on WRT's proposal, um, on their budget, on page three, um, I mean, if you add all those up, it looks like, am I reading that correctly? Because it comes to about $28,000 on the low end, um, for what they're proposing, you know, between all the four tasks. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, you would be if you're adding those numbers up that way. Uh, our game plan would be to try to structure something that you get for fifteen, but you just don't know. But we don't really know until we really sit down and start thinking about it closer, to figuring out exactly what we need and what we can get for 15,000.
Okay, and when, when I read this, I didn't see that they would be doing any of the sort of planning stu-, i- is this just for facilitating, or are they doing other things besides? Because I, when I read this, I, I didn't see that they were doing anything other than just, um, it, well, is the workshop preparation the same thing as facilitating it? Okay.
It's, it's different. It's actually preparing the materials, conducting the workshop.
So, the facilitation, the people for the facilitation, they're just here the day of and running the meeting?
There would be some prep, but in essence, a third-party facilitator wouldn't be the per entity conducting the workshop. They would help, making sure we're getting to the things, we're having a neutral third party, if we get stuck on topics.
Other comments, questions from Council? Barbara?
So, I'm sorry for interrupting you, Garrett. Um, but, um, so, in my reading of the stuff, when we, if we just look at facilitation, the ones that submitted stuff for facilitation, I've been a facilitator before. These are way out of whack, and I think they were looking at these as jobs, um, that they could bill a lot of hours to. I, I, I have a couple of recommendations if we still want to continue this track of separate facilitation. So, um, Tracy Craig at Craig Communications, um, somebody I've worked with for years on public participation. She has a firm, she's been doing, uh, the big PG&E project in Santa Fe, the big tent, but also does a lot of projects around the Bay Area. I've, I've sent you her contact information and phone number. She's out of the country, but she did call me today, and I talked to her about a straight facilitation rather than getting in the middle of all the, it really looked to me like who had, the folks who had submitted what they are calling facilitation, where we're getting themselves sort of wrapped into the project themselves. And also, I think, looking at it as, as a job that they could bill out enough hours. But, so, she would be willing to talk to you all about, uh, pro bono next week about a little bit more, and I think it'd be Garrett and Jim talking to her, and really focusing on just straight facilitation. Um, there obviously would need to be some pre-discussion, but then... but then the facilitation at the meeting. And she is a woman who does a lot of work for her marine rainwater, who I've worked with in Southern California on some pretty big controversial projects on facilitation. She does a lot of work in the Bay Area. So she could talk to you about the possibility of Marie potentially facilitating, if not Tracy herself, if, if that's something you guys want to consider. And then the other person I keep thinking of is the Meadowway Bridge Workshop. I don't know her name, but the woman who served as the facilitator, she just, now, she may be connected with the firm, the engineering firm, but she had really, she was not.
She's, I'm sorry. She's part of Nelson Nygaard, which is the email. It's attached to the second supplemental staff report.
I mean, I thought she got what it was to be a straight facilitator, making sure that people are heard, making sure that where things are going astray, she brings it back. Also helping us not get emotional, helping us sort of listen to what everybody are saying. So I don't know what kind of price they were looking at. But I really think perhaps when we talked to some of the firms, we may have talked a lot about what we were doing with the Town Center Plan. And maybe they got confused and wrapped it into... I mean, one of them had, they were going to do all these graphics. That's, I mean, a design firm, design planning firm would do that kind of stuff. And so it seemed like there was a lot of melding of what I would call fluff. Because I'm a consultant too, and I wouldn't be doing that. I would be looking at this like, how can I help these guys reach people in this workshop? Make sure everybody's heard. Where things go off track, get them back on track, and get us all to listen. And so that's what I had in mind. And so I would suggest to you guys that, I know Tracy said she'll be back in the country and she's happy to talk to you guys next week. If you're interested, I may, obviously, I made no promises, but she might be worthwhile talking to. And I think Renee might have some suggestions.
No, I just wanted to ask, actually, Garrett, the, the person that you were talking about from Meadow, from Meadowway Bridge is part of Nelson Nygaard. Where, where is their letter or email that you attach?
Attachment two to the second supplement. It's an email from Megan Weir. Was she the woman that did the Meadowway consultation?
Well, I'm only asking because they, they are a very well-known transportation planning firm. Is this something, is this a reasonable, is this...
It's still pretty expensive, in my opinion.
This is 3,500 for just the facilitation?
Yeah, if it's just Megan, and actually Megan can't make it that day. It would be someone else from a firm. But it'd be one person, so it's the lower side of their scope.
Okay, that was just a question. John, I know you wanted to ask something.
Well, I just wanted to make the point that it is, I mean, part of it is running a meeting, but, you know, that's, and getting people to agree and respect each other, which is important. But I think it's also, I mean, we're talking about our downtown. And it's, it's, it's really a planning skill. And having that vocabulary of the different things that are available, you know, it kind of allows you to speak the language.
But that's where we were, last time we talked about having the facilitation separate from the design plan. So you still would have the design plan folks there. And I think any good facilitator would, they get involved in very technical issues, but they don't have to be speaking, they don't have to be doing that work. So, but that's where we were saying that. Now, it looks like people are giving very high costs. So that may not be the way we want to go.
I think it's worth it to, to check out these contacts you have. I know that Shelley Hamilton had offered up a couple of names of people she knew locally. And I think it's worth pursuing that. I think it is really important. We don't know if a, two of these are? Oh, you got that so fast. Okay. Well, I would, I would still like to propose that we stay with this idea of having two different, because some, this is going to be a generalization, but we don't want a wonky planner to try and manage the people of Fairfax. I think it's really important to have somebody who can, who can do that and so that the planning expert can work on what they're expert at. So, sorry, Jim. So, public comment, very important. Please forgive us for the long wait, although I hope you found this evening very interesting.
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that there's a couple reps here from some of the firms that submitted.
Oh, great. Thanks, Garrett.
I forgot that in the staff report. But we, we didn't ask any firms to attend. They're just attending because on a voluntary basis, just to see your discussion.
Hi, good evening. My name is Justin Almonte Rochelle, and I live at 103 Portius. And thank you all for your service. It's, it's an honor to be here. My wife and I just moved out here in February, and I do this exact kind of work. There may be a slight amount of fluff in the proposal that I submitted, but it was unintentional. If so, I apologize in advance if I offended anybody.
Which proposal are you?
I represent Hughes Collaboration.
Hughes, okay. Thanks.
Yeah. And I am, you know, I don't have to take, I don't want to take a whole lot of time, but honestly, just to tell you that I would do exactly what it was that you referenced. I would, I would try to, I would try to keep everybody on track. I would try to make sure that everybody that needed to know what was, what was important to be discussed was, was looped in. I would do my best to put out fires. And, you know, honestly, I would do my best to, to give people a voice that don't necessarily have a voice and to increase the level of awareness and excitement and participation and involvement. You know, to kind of try to bring it to, to the level that it was at the beginning of the meeting and to carry that over. I know this is, we're not talking apples-to-apples. And by the way, I attended the first meeting, which is why I, which, and then, and then I reached out to Jim to kind of introduce myself. I now live in Fairfax, and this is the work that I do. So I would be thrilled to be involved in any capacity. I understand there are a lot of qualified people out there to do, to do this, this type of work. And it's good to be here.
Can I ask him a question? One of the things, if you were there, I think you may have noticed, although it would take you a little bit of time living in Fairfax to appreciate the uniqueness of our, and diversity of opinion in our community. I think I've covered it all there. That you may have noticed that the meeting, to an extent, it kind of went off the rails. And I would suggest to you that when we reconvene on October first, it's not as if everybody got on the rail. They're still off the rail. And now I would be interested to know, how do you take a second meeting in which there is a very hot misconception that what this is about, they think that it, the community has a misconception that it's something, other things, which are very hot. And we actually touched on them a little bit in this meeting. How do you bring, how do you get the train back on the, on the straight and narrow?
Well, you, you have a strong resolve and a firm commitment. And you stay persistent and you, I, so for me, if I were, if I were, if I were hired by the Town of Fairfax to, to get the train back on the track, I would, you would have to tell me who the players are to the, to the best of your ability. And I would reach out as a neutral to as many of those, as many of those players as I possibly could. And I would conduct phone conversations with them. I would, I would have email correspondence with them. I might meet them for a cup of coffee. And I would do that on behalf of the process, not on behalf of the Town of Fairfax, not on, on my behalf, not on anyone's behalf, on behalf of the process. I would, I would do my best to, to, to let them kind of...
Yeah, let me just jump in here. Yeah, it's not going to work. You, you have, you have too much diversity. Too, too many people with different and varied interests. You, I, I just don't think it could happen. So in, in other words, let me drill down and wonder if you were standing here in a couple of months, how would you take this red-hot atmosphere and chill it so that people could understand why we were gathered on? Because when they left, they arrived with a misconception. They left with the same misconception. How do we close that gap?
I think ahead of time, again, I think going back to what I was mentioning a second ago, I think ahead of time, I try to let it be red-hot. Let it, let it boil over ahead of time. Take as much of that comment as I could, distill as much of that comment as I could so that the, so that the, the town wouldn't have to take the comment in real time. The town wouldn't have to take the heat in real time. I've already absorbed some of that. And I've, I've given that a voice, I've given that a forum. And by the time we get here, perhaps that could be the opening part of the meeting. These are the issues that, that have been brought to our attention, some of which are, are to be discussed today, some of which are not to be discussed today. And that way, when somebody from the peanut gallery starts chiming in or starts trying to take the trains off track, we've all kind of agreed ahead of time that that's not why we're coming to the second meeting on October first.
I think, though, you are new to Fairfax, and there's a couple of things. It's not, there's not five people. There's a lot of different ways that things are happening. And I've done a lot of facilitation in some, I spent something like 25 years of my life cleaning up hazardous waste sites. And as part of that, working in housing projects in South Central LA, various things. So dealing with all kinds of personalities. And I think what we're, we're not looking for somebody that's going to go out to the community and have coffee with people, which is what we do. We're looking for somebody that can help facilitate the meeting. Because I was here at that meeting, and that meeting really was not successful at all. I think, I think there was too much bias on, on behalf of the town on where we were going. I think it was unclear what was being stated. And I think what we're looking for, if we were to go this way, is somebody to just facilitate the meeting. It's not going out and talking to the maybe hundred people who are circulating things on social media, either on Facebook or on Nextdoor or separate listservs. We can't always fix that, but when we're here in the room, we want people to understand what we're saying so we're not talking in wonky talk or talk that we know because we're closer to it. So I think it's a little different. And I'm also wondering, for somebody who lives in Fairfax, you're new. So you probably come with a much more open mind than somebody who's lived here for a number of years and has a lot of views about the way we would want to proceed. But I would also say that, just like I had to recuse myself from the, the church that's next to my house, being part of the community might also limit your ability to really be as neutral as possible because we all have biases, no matter what we do to kind of curtail those. So I'm wondering if, thinking about this more as just really facilitating a meeting and what David asked you is, how do you think that could have been done better? I think some of our explanation was too complicated, but how do you think it, it could have gone a little better? Just a quick thumbnail sketch.
And I, and by the way, I, I think I submitted 43 points, some odd hours in my initial proposal, which could easily be scaled back to the eight hours, I think that Jim and I had discussed, four hours of prep and four hours for the meeting from nine to one. And I agree with you that, that as a resident, you know, perhaps there could be some conflict of interest. But I, if, if, if I, or if a third-party neutral were able to facilitate that meeting, I think in, in my recollection of the meeting with Jim and with Garrett, I, I actually thought they did a great job. And I had a conversation with Jim, and I told him that. I, I, see, I don't see, personally, I don't see boiling points as problems. I see boiling points as progress. Because now, now however, yes, I'm new, and yes, that may be a bit naive. But that's the way I see boiling points. I see them as progress. Because the closer people get to boiling points, I think the closer they get to some form of resolution and some form of breakthrough. So if Garrett and Jim did not have to actually, again, have their voices be the voices and kind of, if they weren't the ones on the, on the, on the firing line, so to speak, if I were the fire, if I were, if I were taking the bullets, if I were taking all that vitriol, I think I would have a much, I think I would have a much better ability to keep it on track and to keep it on task, which is exactly what you said a few minutes ago. And I, and I, and I speak from experience in, you know, having, having facilitated a decent amount myself. You know, I...
I think I would disagree with you because it, it really, I think it was a very unsuccessful meeting. So there's no criticism of anybody here. Everybody tried. But I think there really could be, there could have, it could have been done better. So I was hoping to hear a little of that, but, you know, stay tuned. We'll see.
Well, I think the final comment, I think, to me, again, the, the significance of the prep work. Again, if it's four hours, it's four hours. But if that four hours became 10 hours, became eight, 10, 12 hours, I think the more prep work you can put in, and, and okay, maybe it's not, you know, my role to have a cup of coffee with somebody. However, I think, I think the more prep work that can be put in ahead of time, the better the process stands a chance of, of being productive.
Mayor, if I may, I, I watched the, the meeting online. And it was a very difficult meeting to lead because, you know, Jim and John, you were basically trying to condense really the story of, okay, this is what we've done so far. And it was just a lot of information to cover. And it was kind of, kind of like a professor lecturing on the history of the Town Center Plan. And, you know, so it's all giving input to people to take in, and then a very limited amount of time for people to kind of react to it. So that was a really difficult kind of task for anyone. And this meeting I see as being a little bit different because it really is more about taking in input from people in a real focused way where there's much more receptacle for ideas and, and breakout groups to deal with specific issues around the Town Center Plan. So, you know, hopefully that will reduce a little bit of the, you know, emotional intensity because people are like frustrated and they want to get their points made. And this is, this is more of a facilitation. It's more like taking in ideas, okay, what do you want to do with, you know, this part of the plan and that part of the plan?
Peter, did you have a question? Because I don't want you to feel like you have to stand at the podium all evening.
No, just, just kind of a comment.
Okay. Thank you so much.
In our thinking about this next meeting, that's kind of what the focus of the facilitator will be a bit more, rather than imparting information, taking it in.
We have another public, we have another member of the public would like to speak.
I think since he's waited here all evening, it's actually Matt Tacker. He's one of the firms that we've been talking about.
I feel like we know you already.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Matt Tacker. You know, I, the proposal that, or the, the materials you've got in front of you was kind of based on, I think, incomplete information. I think you've, you're, you are kind of comparing apples to oranges and so forth. And what didn't come through there, I think adequately, is the amount of facilitation that I've done. And I think the kind of the unique approach that I can offer because I am a planner, a designer, as well as a facilitator. I facilitate in a lot of really tough places. Berkeley, you know, I, I know there's some jokes about Berkeley last time. But also, I did a lot of HOPE6 projects, which are, you know, public housing projects where there are a lot of racial tensions and so forth, where things had to be facilitated. I've been in places where there's a lot of adversity between newcomers and old-timers might operate here and so forth. And so what I find is that actually lecturing at people actually doesn't work very well. It's best to actually take yourself out of the equation as much as possible as, as the facilitator and try to come up with a good exercise or exercises that people can conduct amongst themselves and in a balanced way. So it's not enough to do the exercise, have them do the exercise if they're off in their own cliques, sort of reinforcing their own extreme perspectives. But rather, it has to be an exercise that actually brings people together so that they can understand that there's multiple perspectives, there's multiple points of view, and that we as planners can step out of it and people can, can cross-fertilize and actually educate each other around certain issues. So I wasn't asked to, to offer an approach, but let me just in a condensed way offer the approach that I would take for this particular fund, which was that there would be some preparation. I know that there, basically, for a town plan, you can think of things to, there's kind of two opportunities. There's in front of the property line and there's behind the property line. Okay, in front of the property line is, is a public improvement. That's a streetscape, that's a public realm, that's a chance for place-making and so forth. Behind the property line is also very important, particularly as it faces the street. But those, you know, those are, those are... those, you know, those are, those are design guideline kind of zoning questions. I think one of your great opportunities here is really what's in front of the property line, is your public realm. And so I think that, based on the little bit that I know about Fairfield, that a range of possibilities, Fairfax, my apologies. I apologize, I'm, my head's racing here. Based on the little bit that I know, I think that your opportunities in terms of the street improvements, the place-making, public realm improvements, which would be both plazas and streets, pedestrian connections, better use of your parking and so forth, I think those options, a range of, a menu of options are possible. And I think that that menu of options could be presented in a fairly concise way, and also using boards. And wouldn't it be interesting if, after all those different options are noted, without any specific places in mind in the downtown, do it neutral in terms of like where it is, so people don't get hung up on, well, will that work where? But talk about parklets, talk about what a shared street is, talk about, you know, show examples and so forth, and then have pictures of those. Then you equip people with green dots for what they like, red dots, you know, and one red dot for what they really don't like. And allow them to mold it over, give them a limited, you know, like five green dots and all. Allow them to apply their dots, and then stand back and see what people generally like, and have discussion, and allow people to talk about why they like something, why they didn't like, and then also, where the red dots are gathered up, what they didn't like, allow people to talk about that as well. And have a conversation then, based around some sort of shared understanding of what the possibilities are. I think there's a real danger in hiring a facilitator who's simply there to receive input and put it up on the wall. And because I don't think that that is meaning, to be honest, I don't think that's meaningful long-range input. What you want is, you want the input to be focused on issues, but do it in a way that allows a balanced conversation to occur.
Thank you for that. You spoke in the general sense. I know from speaking to people that they're red-hot, because if I make a left-hand turn on that street over there, my whole life is miserable, and we've got to do something about that.
Right. So I think the workshop, I think you have a long workshop, to be honest. You guys are thinking about three or four hours, or something like that? Yeah. It's really, it's really long, guys. You're asking a lot for, in terms of somebody who's set that much time aside. But the advantage of that would be, you have the possibility for, you know, a three- or four-part workshop, where you have a presentation of possibilities in a very neutral sense, not being place-specific. You can do this, you know, what do you like, what don't you like, sort of exercise, again, in a kind of a place-neutral sort of sense, just to kind of get a sense of the group, and to allow people to begin to talk about what they just put dots on, as opposed to coming in and thinking about the workshop being something about something different. Then you could have a break, and then you could have an exercise where you could take the different options in terms of public realm improvements. You could have game pieces for the different public realm improvements, and you could gather people in small groups to put, you know, the game pieces that they like where they think it ought to be. And it's important to have balanced groups. It's important to have groups that are about five to eight people, because that allows everybody to talk. You get, in a smaller group, you don't get enough diverse opinion. Larger than eight, everybody doesn't get a chance to talk. It's also important to get groups where you have a cross-section of views, a kind of microcosm within each group. Because it's, again, it's really important that the extreme, the person that comes in with an extreme perspective hears that other people feel differently. And it's not the planners who feel differently, it's actually their fellow citizens who are feeling differently. And then, by having people working in small groups with the game pieces, it'd be fun to put it together. The game pieces would be color-coded, so at a glance, when things get put up on the wall, you can sort of see what people are seeing. And you put them all up on the wall, and you can begin to see patterns. You can see, oh, there's five groups, and hey, all five of those groups put that game piece in such and such a place. Wow, that's consensus. Or you might, conversely, you might discover that all five groups, in a certain location, they had five different ideas. That tells you something as well. So I would look for the right exercise. And again, I would caution you to simply have a facilitated, kind of open-ended discussion. Even if you ask good questions and all, if there's open-ended answers, well, frankly, it's likely to sit on a shelf.
So I have a question, a couple of things. So one thing, perhaps, I think we haven't been clear, is the idea was to have a facilitator facilitate the meeting, but we would still have a planning design firm that would do the graphics and be part of the process. So it wasn't contemplated just to do a straight facilitation meeting where you didn't have any technical help. And the idea was that the planning design firm would augment our staff resources, which are limited. But I do have a couple of comments. I read through your information, and it sounds like you've done some wonderful projects. The thing that always are kind of buzzwords for me that set up red flags is, I don't know how much you've walked in Fairfax, but we're not an urban city, and we don't necessarily have a huge transit station. So one of the things that I think is going to be a red flag for not just me, that we do have a walkable city, is to use words like urban and TOD. And, you know, we don't need to create huge plazas, because we already kind of have that. And so whoever comes in to help us, and I think you've made a good argument for why you could bring facilitation, as well as the planning part of it, or design, is that really needs to spend some time in this town, really understanding what it's about. We already are walkable. We do have a lot of people biking, walking, even riding the bus. And how can we do kinds of things that will work, that'll make the town even more walkable, or even more bikeable? But I really don't want to see, you know, we're not Berkeley, and Berkeley is great, and I'm sure there are wonderful things there, but I don't want to see a cookie-cutter approach to urban planning TODs type stuff put here. But I think, I just want to say, you've raised some good points, and I want to say, when it was originally six hours, I argued for three, which I thought was too long. And we all kind of argued a little bit, went to four. I still think it's too long, I agree with you, that people are going to lose energy. But I think you raised some really good points, and I would just say, I would just caution you that we're a little different than some of the bigger cities. I saw that you worked on Glen Allen, which is probably more like what we have. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Just make a comment about what Barbara's sort of talking about here. There are some towns, I think, in which the city fathers and mothers sit down and decide how the town might look like. And then there were towns which are, which are created over time. And I think when that occurs, there's things that everybody gets used to, but if you stood back from it, or you just visited us, you would say, wow, that is not the place where I would have put that. And we have a ton of that. They're charming, they're quirky, they're interesting, we live with them, but really, anybody with an IQ over about one wouldn't have designed the town and put that there. But now, we have this opportunity, from our implementation of the general plan, to sort of revisit this hodgepodge Wild West town that was in the silent movie era and all of that, and just sort of built itself up from a frontier town over the last 150-odd years, into something that is more unified, and that works better for its 7,500 and gazillions of people traveling through. Because at the moment, we have transportation problems and other things. And this is our big chance to sort of correct some quirky and charming things that are, I think, holding us back and making our life here a little more difficult than it has to be.
I'm just going to take in those comments, thank you very much. Really, it would hardly be my intention to come in and make this an urban place, or, you know, any more transit-oriented than the community wants it to be. I'm a good listener, you know, the trick would, the trick, you know, in doing these exercises and all, is always to find examples that people can relate to. Because people are always pointing to something and say, well, that would never work here, right? So that would be a lot of the legwork ahead of time. I love small towns. I grew up in a small town, 5,000 people when I was born, 25,000 when I graduated from high school in Naperville, Illinois. I ended up in Berkeley, because I got two master's degrees there. And trans-oriented development, I think we all agree, is a path to regional sustainability. That's been the focus of my career. But love for small towns, absolutely. Character, design, thinking out of the box, walkable, all those kinds of things, for sure.
Peter.
A question for Mr. Tacker. Have you looked at our Town Center element in the general plan? You may not have had a chance to look at that.
I didn't. I had a chance to just kind of briefly skim the, kind of the work plan that you've got that kind of outlined what each of the workshops would be about. That's kind of the extent of my understanding.
Sure. And I'm wondering what you think the, your range of cost would be for facilitating this?
Well, I can't, I can tell you that I am a small office, and my overhead is low, and that on an hourly basis, I'm very affordable. I-
Excuse me, can I jump in?
I couldn't tell you offhand. If you had a, if you had a limit, if I could understand your priorities and your limits, then we can, we can-
Do you mind, I'm sorry to interrupt, but let's let Jim, because I know you two have talked.
Do you mind if I just jump in for a second? We, when, before this got brought up to you, we had a very preliminary loose conversation with Matt.
Sure.
He offered us what is, he referred to as a blended rate. It's not his normal hourly rate, it's lower. And he also has some junior staffer that he might use for some of the grunt work, which would save the higher-priced work, you know, it would stretch the money further. But we basically negotiated 80 hours at 116-hour blended rate, so that's $12,800. And then the cost of materials would be on top of that.
And so, and just to kind of clarify, so, you know, we're, so this approach that I described was with that kind of budget in mind, which would be to do all the research in terms of all the different kinds of options you'd have. We also want to be, might have to be thinking about what's behind the property line, too, architecturally. But, you know, try to figure out how to present all that stuff clearly. And then to facilitate, I've worked with Tracy Craig, by the way, you know, we did the Marin County multifamily design guidelines together. I'd be delighted to work with her. I think she would do an especially good job around the outreach stuff, so that you get balanced participation coming into the, into the workshop.
So just a question, do you, with this 80 hours?
Yeah.
So where do we end up?
You end up with some schematic concepts at the end of it. What you end up with is, is a, okay, so the products are, you know, knowing all your different options, and a description of your options going into it, and then the workshop itself, and what the results are, and recording all those things, so that you've got a recordation of the dot exercise, a recordation of the people working in small tables exercise, and then kind of an analysis of what that community input seems to imply. And then the suggestion, in terms of design concepts, which would be loose kind of vignettes, if you will. Loose vignettes, then, of the key places that people seem to be especially interested in.
And then that leads us into workshop number three, with the analysis, the key interest pieces.
Can I jump in?
I'm just trying to get the whole picture.
Matt would, you know, at this point, his involvement would be getting prepared for the second workshop, being a part of the second workshop, and sort of packaging the results of that. Between workshop three, second, sorry, between workshop two and three, in the work program you approved in April, we would then, in-house, and with Larry Kenning's, and possibly with someone like Matt, if we wanted to continue on, we would then, forgive the planning term, noodle the brainstorming ideas that came out of the second workshop, and sort of test them from a learned standpoint. Well, this could work this way, this would have problems actually for this reason, and then come back to the third workshop, having sort of digested what came out of the second one, and do the process again at the third process, third workshop, with refining the analysis of the second workshop.
Can I just add something, though, in that is that, you know, you have a, you really have a, what's called in the academic world as libertarian landscape. Means it's one that has grown up kind of more, kind of incrementally over time, and as a consequence, it's very nestled sort of into the topography and so forth. And so, and I don't mean this in a disparaging way, you kind of have a, you have a quirky town, you have a quirky town. You've got lots of, you know, weird angles and stuff like that.
That's what we love.
Right? And so I think it's really imperative that you have a designer who's, you know, who can think out of the box, and can, you know, like draw, you know, draw a curve, or draw a diagonal, where somebody else, who would be more of like an engineer or something, might be hung up on, you know, keeping it a right angle, you know? And so that would be something that I would, and that's why I suggest maybe some loose vignettes or something. Even if somebody like yourself and Jim and Larry, take it from there, I think. Why not? You know, if I'm engaged at that point, I'd still like to leave you with some, perhaps out of the, perhaps I'd leave you with the out-of-the-box ideas, and then you could take it from there.
Jim, I wanted to ask you, was Matt the person originally you were interested? So I wanted to just say that hearing you talk, I feel very comfortable, just, I think, you know, what was missing the last time is, we didn't get to hear from you, and it sounds like you're very open to listening as well, because I think some of my comments may have been probably difficult, or harsh, or something, but I feel that you're really open to the quirky characteristics we have here. It's also heartening to hear that you've worked with Tracy, who I've known about 20 years, and worked with on some pretty difficult projects. So that's not to say that I'm totally against the idea of having a facilitator, as well as you seem to have the ability to do the blended approach. But I like what you've described, so I just want to say, I appreciate you coming here, because it's helped.
Just correct something? When I said the blended rate, it wasn't for facilitation and the design work, it was just his firm's planning design piece of it, with another person in his firm that's at a lower cost. And then he also was reducing his normal 200-plus per hour rate, so that it made our budget work.
But what we're getting with what the cost you threw out is the whole kit.
Well, he's offered up the facilitation also, but if I could just interject, it's kind of a nice thing that, well, whatever.
Okay, but before we go on-
I do want to say, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, please.
But I would be delighted to blend myself with somebody like Tracy, or the gentleman who just spoke. I mean, I do think that, that while, you know, I can bring a structure to the workshop, and the workshop materials, and have the method and so forth, there's still a lot to be said in terms of public information, and outreach, and making sure that you bring diverse voices, you know, that you encourage a diversity of opinions to actually come and attend the workshop and all. That would be something that Tracy excels at.
Can I jump in for a second? If you think back, after the whole petition drive to repeal the zoning ordinance change in the downtown, we started those three workshops to help explain again to the public what the general plan was about. And at the very first one, after all the off-the-rails heated stuff that came out of the whole petition process, we had somebody in the room that was doing just that role, and that person was taking the arrows, and was sort of the adult in the room that wasn't a stakeholder, was just saying, okay, wait, the ground rules are, this is how we're going to conduct ourselves. And what I'm hearing is, that actually might, even though you have the capability of being facilitator, taking the arrows, if you will, in the front, when, you know, he can step back at the time when people start throwing the arrows, and the facilitator says, oh, let's go back to the ground rules. says, "Oh, let's go back to the ground rules. Here are the ground rules."
I just want to know if there was any other public comment because we've engaged in conversation, which is great.
I love arrows.
Noted. So I thank you. And I think that because this item is a discussion and consideration of options, I think we've heard two very interesting options. And how would you like us to proceed?
So this came about because you were concerned when you heard what staff was going to do within its purview and you took the extra step to pull it up, get it visible, have a transparent process. Sounds like that has worked and you feel more comfortable with the direction this staff was going. And I guess my question to you would be, if you are comfortable with the way staff was moving, it's not a done deal, we haven't finalized anything. The question I would put back to you now is, okay, if you feel comfortable with the direction staff was going, I still hear the idea of a second, a separate facilitator. And that would be good to get closure on.
I think I would suggest this is why not check in? And I think we're also very, you know, we're limited funds. And so I feel comfortable in the direction you were going, but I would like you to check in with at least my recommendation, if there's any others, and just see if there's some way potentially a meld with, in my opinion, Mr. Tacker, who you already were planning on before we sort of put the brakes on that. So that's where I would like you to just check in. But I think what I also heard Garrett say in the staff report is that we're not saying that that's a for sure component, that I think you wanted us to kind of leave it up to you to make the final decision on that. Is that correct?
And can I just throw something out for Justin? Justin, if we go another direction in facilitation, we are going to need people at each breakout table. And it seems to me that your skillsets will be really valuable at the second workshop, no matter who is the chosen facilitator. So, and you're a member of this community now, so thank you for stepping up and don't go away.
So, I had a couple of questions just. So the, Mr. Tacker, the 80 hours, would that also include preparation of materials for the workshop?
You know, the 80 hours at 160 is, is just a, a way to get at it, not to exceed them out. I will be spending more than eight hours, I'm sure, to deliver the kinds of things that I talked about. I'm very committed to doing good work. I take great pride in my work. I'm very excited about Fairfax. And you've got a charming town, really. I'd be, I'd be quite happy to, to work here. So, so whatever the 160 times 180 was that?
It was 12,800. And by the way, when we walked around the town, he did, he did say to me exactly what he just said to you. I didn't, wasn't going to bring it up, but he said, "You know, Jim, I'm going to be eating a lot of hours at this rate, but I'm, I want to do it."
And I'm, I'm able to do that because I have, I have a small office, I have a small, I have a small staff. I, I, I work on things directly. I don't, you know, I'm not going to hand this off to somebody. I don't have a lot of people I hand stuff off to who I have to pay their salary every month to and feed the beast, you know? That's just the way I've chosen, that's, that's, I, I enjoy doing the work and that's the way I've chosen to work.
Sure. And again, this would also include preparing materials for the workshop? Okay.
Can I ask you a question about how you could, how you see this going on in, in light of what I see as, at least until it's tamped down, a little bit of confusion, hostility? I was wondering if you thought it is best to sort of prepare the materials and then have a certain remove and let the facilitator take those proverbial arrows while you're, I don't know, not floating above it, but floating around it, taking the temperature, the measure, understanding what you're hearing, but not being responsible to chug, chug, chug it through its four hours? Is there a benefit do you see in that?
There's benefit to having somebody who's really skilled at running meetings and really skilled at getting the outreach both before and after the, the meeting. You know, I run a pretty tight workshop myself, you know? So, and keep things rolling and do it in a, in a kind way. And I always, I don't feel like I ever get into a point of, imagine working in Berkeley, working on the downtown plan and, and the, and the amount of animosity that was going on and all. And, you know, frankly, you have a conversation with people and present them with information and you want them just to understand, you know, their choices. And, and other people will end up saying the things that maybe as a, as a planner and designer, you would have liked to have said yourself, but you don't really need to say that.
Really? We, we should get you a seat on flood zone nine, so.
I also, but I also think is that, I don't, I guess I don't like the term arrows. I think that when we do these kinds of things, it's incumbent on all of us, even if there's a facilitator in the room, to kind of check ourselves and, and really try to be open to what people are saying, even if it's not what we want to hear. So I think regardless if we use you with a facilitator, use you or completely go some other direction, I, I think we all need to work very hard at listening and being open because I sort of see with any breakout sessions that you might have a council member at each one of those tables. And so it's incumbent on us to, we all need to be, I don't know if the adult in the room is the right word, but we all need to really make sure that people are heard, even when it's not what we want to hear, that, that people who are sitting quietly, maybe we draw them out. So everybody's going to need some level of skill regardless.
That's right. And so there would be a train, the, the people who are going to man the tables, I would ask that when we do the, assuming that, you know, I'd be doing it, when we do the small, the small table work, you'd want a neutral facilitator at each, somebody who's willing to not take a partisan position around things, who's just going to be neutral and keep the conversation going. There'd be a training for them, there'd be a set of ground rules that they would become aware of and they would inform people. Everybody would get a chance to speak. The way you open up a, a table exercise is you give each person a chance to speak and you record that information first. Everything gets, there's no bad ideas, you know? Everything gets recorded. There's no reason why you shouldn't just write everything down as you hear it, really. It, I mean, it gives a texture. And often it's the clash, sometimes, sometimes it's the, the presentation of what seems to be opposing ideas that leads to a creative breakthrough. So you, you can be sort of hurting yourself by, by, by not listening as well.
Okay, so not to interrupt.
Yeah, sorry.
But what I would, tell me if this makes sense. So I would think that at this point with what we've heard, we do have, when is the workshop, October 1st, and we're in the beginning of August? So would this be something that you would go out and converse about and get clear on numbers and bring back to us in September and it would give enough time or tonight? Would you like us to make a decision?
I, I think tonight.
As it was a discussion item and I think not all of the people who put in knew that this would become an interview session.
Well, no, they didn't and nor were we.
So I just want to make sure we're doing what we said by agenda.
So I think from the council's discussion, that gives us enough direction on how to proceed, at least in terms of the firms, and we'll explore facilitators. But because the workshop takes so much time to come back to you in September, it wouldn't allow us enough time to really prep up for October unless you change the date for the workshop.
No.
Which I don't think that was the, what you would prefer to do. So I would say at this point, I think staff has enough direction and we know about what concerns you had in order to try to do the best job possible. I will say from my perspective in other towns, you are getting a great deal from Mr. Tacker.
Right. No, I recognize that.
I'm not going to mention how much I paid, but I, for these type of projects, we paid like six digits ultimately for all the workshops and the plan. But we're not there yet, so, but this one workshop, it's a pretty, it's a pretty cost effective.
And could I then request that I would be privy to this process going forward in terms of the negotiation or what you, what direction you're taking? It just, it's not going to come back to us, so.
Well, normally what happens with the fee, as long as it's under my authority, then we would just figure out something. Same with the facilitator. I think our parameter was we wanted to keep the facilitation costs. I said under 3,000. It sounds like we want even under 2,000 or less if possible. So that's what our parameters that we would use. I, I think from staff, if the council wanted to designate that you, that's, that's fine. It would, it would make it more difficult from our perspective in the sense that I, I'd be real, well, normally we would let the council know as a whole because you would all want to know what's going on, but to have one, unless it's a subcommittee.
Well, it doesn't have to be. I just want to make sure that we're, we're, we're kept apprised of the process because you said, no, now we understand what you're, you know, what you're looking for, you could go a different direction. I just want to make sure that there's open communication.
How about you just report back in September what you've decided? And I feel that you guys have done a really good job of reaching out to a number of firms and we appreciate that. And so just let us know in September, is that work?
Sure. I think September, that's a great idea. I think at that term, if assuming we, we contract with Mr. Tacker, then we'd be able to give you an idea of what we actually think the structure of the workshop would be and what some goals would be. And that'd be a perfect opportunity for the comment, for the council to comment if we're on the right track or you think we're doing something that needs improvement. Yeah, be feedback. So I think that's, that's a great idea. We'll report back in September, but we'll be starting before then. And I'd just like to last thank Jim for trying to get so many proposals in this short period of time.
A quick question regarding, I think it's Megan Weir with the Nelson Nygaard Firm. She said, she did the facilitated workshop on the Meadowway Bridge and just how, how was she, how did, were people happy with her job?
I've said she, she did a good job, but Garrett says she's not available on October 1st, so it'd be somebody else.
Okay.
Okay, well, good. Thank you all for coming. It's over. Okay. Don't rush, David. Where's my agenda? Where the heck is my agenda? Can I have your agenda? So, all right, moving on to number 17, which is the second reading by title only, an adoption of an ordinance adding a new Article III medical marijuana cultivation to Town Code Chapter 17.138, regulations applying to multiple, in multiple districts of Title 17, zoning of the Fairfax Town Code to ban marijuana cultivation with exemptions for personal cultivation for qualified patients and primary caregivers. Garrett, staff report, please.
So you may recall you actually introduced the ordinance with some amendments on June. And in essence, it's, as you indicated, it's an ordinance that actually bans medical marijuana cultivation with exceptions for personal cultivation for qualified patients and primary caregivers, and it also provides staff regulatory framework for enforcement. This represents the second reading, so if you adopt it, it would take effect in 30 days. And so that's pretty much the staff report.
Okay, any questions? Public comment? No? Okay, so seeing none. Barbara? Well?
Well, I'll make a motion to waive second reading and read by title only and adopt 797.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have, are you saying that I should wait for Barbara? I was thinking that that would be a good thing to do.
I think maybe it's just a courtesy if you waited a minute and maybe wanted to talk about something else of interest.
Okay, so we're going to interrupt, interrupt your motion.
Fine.
Talk amongst yourselves.
Would you do the council reports right now?
Oh my goodness, we forgot the council reports.
Great, I'll start. Since it was a short, three weeks and so last meeting and it's summertime, none of the, none of the committees that, on which I serve met, so I have no reports.
And John?
Still didn't work. Ooh, I got it to work. Yeah, it was short. I still went to a few meetings though. One of them was the, the Fairbuck Board met a couple of times and we had a bunch of back and forth things around the sunsetting of the Fairbuck being used as an active currency, but still being a souvenir for visitors of Fairfax. I went to a volunteer board meeting also that was very interesting. Volunteers are a great organization. And let me see, I went to a transportation authority board meeting at which, which also went very well, basically in trying to get the, the area around San Rafael, a new smart state, smart train station. There's a lot of moving parts there and trying to get a, a new permanent station in place before a temporary one takes its place. And also facilitate the multi-use path for bicycles, pedestrians, routes to school and everything alongside the train tracks going in between Davidson School as, along with other things in the Larkspur Ferry to make that connection possible as well as connections into the Canal District. So it wasn't a lot of Fairfax stuff in that meeting, but it was stuff that regionally concerns Fairfax. And let me see, and I guess we worked out a way to pay for approaches to the Richmond Bridge too, at that meeting. And I also met together with Renee, with the BPAC Committee, which is the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And basically we were going over a lot of the recommendations that are going out into the new updated bicycle pedestrian plan. And Renee and I also met with their new MCBC Planning Director a couple of days ago. Showed him around. Thanks.
Okay, Peter.
Thank you. Not too much going on. I attended the Affordable Housing Committee and that was on the 28th. That's the first time that board that, that I've met as part of that group since I've been appointed and I thought it was a very, very interesting and productive meeting. And that's about all.
Okay, Barbara.
Yeah, I attended the board meeting for Community Media Center of Marin. Those are the folks who film us and do a lot of public education and government programming. Also attended the Affordable Housing Committee meeting. And I do want to clarify that the Affordable Housing meets about once or twice a year. We actually met once or more last year. So it hasn't been two years, but we could meet more frequently as needed. Thanks.
Oh. Okay, so I had the great honor of delivering a proclamation for Carl Shapiro's 100th birthday and attended a portion of that party. And, and we, as always, have our town chamber liaison meeting, discussed many things that have to do with, oh, I think I'm tired. Anyway, that was a, a great meeting.
Whatever it was about.
I'm sorry. So, planning meeting, an important community forum of leaders, students, peer mentors, parents, educators, folks from Health and Human Services, law enforcement, addiction specialists, local government, business, huge group of people coming together to, to, well, it's a, it's a meeting coming together on the 30th of August to really begin to take some real action steps towards dealing with the, the crisis we have in our youth community with substance abuse. So this is a, a meeting of the minds and of leaders to start talking about policy. We're working. We're working, it's being hosted by the Marin County Office of Education and we're really hoping for some real actionable things to take place there. So, as part of the planning committee for that. The ride through town with Bjorn, I'm going to say this wrong, but it's Gripenborg, who is the new Policy and Planning Director of Marin County Bicycle Coalition, was, I think, very important and it was great for John and I to actually see together all of the places that are really most problematic along our route. We did complete the, the updating and corrections on the draft for the bicycle pedestrian update and it will go to Alta to then come back to us for approval in, I believe, September. The local task force meeting for solid and hazardous waste today, Zero Waste Marin is very active right now. New programs, the schools programs has been funded, the funding for those programs has been increased and there are five schools that have already applied. The sad news and the very actually bad news here is that our recycling commodities markets have bottomed out and are not going to come up for quite some time. We've hit the wall and so, if we don't reduce what we consume, then we're just going to keep overflowing landfills and causing destruction. And it can be changed with our behaviors, but obviously, we know that that takes time and it takes effort and it takes more and more education. So, we have to keep on it. But it is truly, we're reaching a really critical place here. So, that is something that I learned about this morning and I just wanted to just retell a quick story. I know so many people are watching at home, but everyone should know this and that is that there is a, one of the neighbors on San Gabriel Court, is it? In Marin Oaks?
Yes.
Is in need of our assistance to clear out brush, which has become a fire hazard. The neighborhood is coming together. Mark Lockaby, who is our Building Services Director, he is offering up his son's pickup truck this Saturday for a work party to go there and help haul the rest of the remaining debris to the chipper day. I will be there to help him. David Wineshoff says he won't be there to help him, but we'll see about that. And, and I'd invite others to come out. Several of the neighbors who have had trouble with the situation in the past are also coming out to help. So, I want to, I just want to shout out to especially Mark Lockaby, because I'm sure he's listening right now, and say that this is a great model for, for a community effort to make something better that has not, that has been less than a good situation for quite some time. And with that.
You have a motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor.
You have a motion on the floor.
Oh, my goodness, we do. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, David. Would you repeat the motion for item number 17?
I move that we waive second reading and read by title only and adopt ordinance 797 and ordinance of the town, Council of the Town of Fairfax, adding a new Article III medical marijuana cultivation to Town Code Chapter 170138, regulations applying to multiple districts of Title 17 zoning of the Fairfax Town Code.
Second. Okay, so we have.
I already seconded it.
We stopped in time.
When you stepped away from the dais.
We stopped because you were.
Okay, so we have a motion, Wineshoff, second lax, third Kohler. Now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, motion passes. And, and just one moment, please. I would, I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Ethel Seiderman, who, who worked for justice and equity and respect for all families and children regardless of economic, standing or ethnic background. And I will tell you that she, if you speak of Ethel, in any group of people, you'll hear a good number of those people say, oh, she was my mentor. And when you can have that many people in a community, far and wide actually beyond our community, say that she was a mentor, then she has lived a righteous life and we will remember her and she will inspire us going forward.
And she founded Fairfax.
And she founded the Fairfax San and Selma Children's Center, which is a gem in our community. So, thank you and we will adjourn.